All of the October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five town council meeting to order. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll? I called it to order. I always do that. Thank you very much. Could you please join us in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Bill?
Here.
Mayor for Tim Berner?
Here.
Mr. Farrell?
Here.
Ms. Kay?
Here.
Mr. Spencer?
Here.
Ms. Tillerson?
Here.
The first item of business is the approval of the minutes from the September nineteenth council meeting. Those have been circulated in advance to council members. I provided two small corrections, basically typos, to the clerk. Does anybody else have any other changes?
I do not.
If none, they are deemed approved with those corrections. Thank you. The next agenda item is citizen comments on agenda items only at this point. Are there any citizens' comments? Seeing none. Updates. First, I will endeavor to be much briefer than usual, given the fact that we have a very, very packed agenda today. Just a couple of things fairly briefly. I want to note that I hosted a quarter— one of our quarterly town hall meetings last Wednesday was joined by Kika Board Chair Kevin Donlin. I appreciate him for joining that session. I think it was a very constructive discussion. What it did highlight was there's still a lot of confusion in the community about who is responsible for what. Issues between Kika and Toki, sometimes between Toki and the ARB, and we need to continue to educate the body politic about some of these issues because it has real-world implications. A couple of things, I'll just briefly reference and won't belabor these. One is with regard to things like e-bikes. There seems to be confusion about whether e-bikes are permitted in the town of Kiowa Island or not. To be clear, e-bikes are not prohibited in the town of Kiowa Island, nor are low-speed vehicles. Kika does prohibit e-bikes or low-speed vehicles on its common-owned property, which is most of the roads and leisure trails, but not all, on Kiowa Island proper. But people need to understand that there's a distinction between town municipal ordinances and Kika rules and regulations. The more problematic one that's come up in a couple of contexts is—it appears to be in the owner community, the builder community, and others, a lot of confusion still about the respective roles and responsibilities of the town and the Architectural Review Board with regard to zoning and building permit matters. And I just want to clarify for the record, and if we need to have more construction industry meetings, we will do so. But the town is solely responsible for issuing zoning permits pursuant to our zoning code. The town is solely responsible for issuing building permits pursuant to the building code. If there are to be waivers of the zoning code, there is a process, a statutorily-based process, for obtaining waivers. The ARB has no authority whatsoever to grant waivers from the town zoning code. Same thing with regard to application of the building code administered by our building official in the Building Department. The ARB does not have any authority to waive statutory requirements with regard to the building code. What the ARB has authority is to apply its own standards with regard to covered property under the general covenants, full stop. They can be more restrictive if the covenants so allow. They can't waive or relax municipal requirements. Enough on that. We'll touch on that a little bit more with regard to issues related to the Design Review Board. Just to let everybody a heads-up, and I think we'll be sending out a public notice about this, but some work on the roundabout. This is heavy maintenance work, is scheduled to begin within the next probably week, and there are probably maybe some modest traffic impacts. This is maintenance work at this point in time, really more tree health than anything else, and removing some invasive landscaping that's on the roundabout. But it's a precursor to the re-landscaping project of the roundabout that will take place at a later time. The last thing I want to mention is with regard to our packed agenda, and particularly all the issues regarding the changes to our zoning code that have been proposed by the Planning Commission. It's kind of a difficult balancing act. We try to be as transparent as possible, provide ample opportunities for public input at every turn. If we need to do more or do a better job, we're certainly willing to onboard that. But again, there have been—I've gotten some comments that some of the stuff that's coming through is rushed, where there's a rush to judgment with regard to some of these recommendations. I would simply note that in the last council meeting, we probably spent two, two-and-a-half hours talking about several of these zoning changes. Then we had a four-hour workshop after that. Both of those are public meetings. Those are following on the heels of multiple Planning Commission meetings, talking about these issues, all of which are public meetings as well. Also schedule public hearings around these, and even when the council considers something, there's both first and second readings, so there's opportunity both at first reading, in the interim period, and second reading to address these issues. But having said that, I understand that some of these issues impact property owners, and we want to make sure we receive their input. But people do need to pay attention to what's going on with respect to all of these public meetings and the lengthy, kind of multi-week or multi-month process. And with that, I will turn it over to Councilmember Berner.
That was really nice and short. As the mayor said, we have an agenda that I estimate is going to go to eight o'clock So I'm not going to say anything now with the updates. The only thing I am going to say, because we have a very important executive session that's going to be by itself at least two hours. I'm going to submit a motion that as of 3:00 PM, we stop what we're working on and go to executive session.
You'll make a motion to amend the agenda at that point in time?
At that—well, because at that point in time, you mean at 3:00 PM?
So you're—
You mean at 3:00 PM to do it?
You're proposing—or you're making a motion now to amend our agenda?
I am.
And so what is going to happen with all—what is your proposal with regard to all the unfinished zoning matters that are pending?
It will either be carried over to the next town council meeting, or we'll have a special call meeting.
Is there a second to that? It requires a supermajority to amend the—
Yeah, two-thirds, right?
Yeah.
I think that—you know, you and I talked earlier today. I'm concerned about having our wits about us when we go into the executive session and starting it very late in the day. I'd rather do it earlier in the day, so I'd be willing to have a special call or meet at the next town council meeting on the agenda items that we aren't able to cover. Hopefully, we actually maybe go faster through them, so I'll second that.
Discussion.
Would we also be able to—I think there are two or three ordinances that are not quite as demanding from an urgency perspective. Would we be able to shift the order of that discussion?
To what? Just—let me back up. I—because I had indicated, you'd given me a heads-up in advance, that I do not agree with a motion, and I will oppose it for a variety of reasons. One, we have important pending matters, and to put those off to undertake an executive session, which is not, in my view, absolutely—actually necessary because there's no action to be taken at this point in time, I think would be unfortunate and inappropriate. I would certainly be fine with scheduling a special call executive session at a future date, but not delaying important business matters that are before the council and the community now.
I'll just say that the topics for the executive session are very important to the community, and I think that it's important council—
They can be—they can—those conversations can be undertaken at any point in time.
Madeline, are you done with—Madeline, are you done with your—
Yeah.
Okay, well, if—we can move a couple of things from the front burner to the back burner, then I would be happy to make those suggestions. But otherwise, I would be supportive of Russ's recommendation.
So I really appreciate Mr. Berner's idea, because what we have is a big tablet today of things to do, and executive session is important. I think I resonate more with Mr. Spencer's idea, because it gives weight to both pieces. We can take care of what's pending urgent business today, and we could have an executive session as early as tomorrow, as far as I'm concerned. And again, the fact that you didn't call it, Mr. Mayor, is probably weighs in on that too, but I think both have high importance, and I don't want to be working until seven o'clock at night and be tired from—and miss something. So I would be in the camp of kind of supporting what Mr. Spencer's saying, is maybe have the executive session at a special call at a future date after today.
Well, the pending motion is to actually terminate business as of three o'clock today, and whatever business is unfinished, I guess would simply schedule it and agenda it a future time. That's the pending motion. If there's—are there any amendments to that motion?
To clarify what I said, I was suggesting we have the executive session today, because we've got all the right parties here, and then decide when to handle the rest of the pressing business through follow-up special calls or the next council meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was of the opinion and thought you were saying that the pressing business we have of the town is—takes precedent in the executive session. There's no real urgency to that. We could do that tomorrow, so I'd rather take that.
From my understanding of the executive session, I think that there are—and comments I've received from others since I became aware of the executive session, I think that it is pressing that we come together and determine some strategic issues as far as how the town's going to approach things.
Purpose of the executive session is to receive legal advice, not to decide on strategic issues. We need to make very clear that that's not the appropriate purpose of an executive session.
I misspoke, but yes.
So there is a motion to terminate the regular agenda—to modify the regular agenda, and however far we've gotten, terminate it and then move into executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
No, the motion fails.
Nothing else from trying to speed this along.
Okay, I appreciate that. So we now—now—any other comments?
Nothing.
Okay.
Need to speed this along.
Councilmember Kay.
I do have a few things I'd like to update the community on. First, Jim Jordan and I went in front of the Kika Board last—just last week to ask if there was any action that Kika could take that would further enhance our efforts to save our bobcats. We didn't have a suggestion, but we did lay out the situation as clearly as possible. There was some discussion that they would at least explore whether or not a rule change could be made that would prohibit the use of SGA's on Kika property—well, across the island, behind the gate. And because we were told that community influence to the Kika Board was important and could be influential, I would ask anybody who's either watching this via Zoom, or whether they watch this later, or whether they're in the audience now, if you wanted to contact a member of the Kika Board and voice your support of any and all initiatives to save the bobcats, that would be really helpful. We have a photograph. Neil, if you could put it up. This—the bobcat photo?
Yeah.
This, I believe Brad, was taken in your neighborhood seven years ago. One of the Kika Board members sent it to me and said, "Look how well this represents that, in fact, the bobcats are eating our rats. Our rats are being treated with the second-generation anticoagulants. They're getting into the food chain. Bobcats are at the top of the food chain, and this is what we're dealing with. Jim tells me this is probably a roof rat. It doesn't take that much of the poison to get down into the rest of the food chain, all the way up to the bobcats, and that's what's going on. And there are alternatives that are as cheap and as safe as SGA's, and we really need to be making every effort to use them." Please, again, community, sign the pledge. Talk to your pest control company and make sure they've signed a pledge. It's on the website, but whenever Atlantic Pest comes around to my house, I ask them for sure, "Are you guys pledge signers?" And I got another confirmation yesterday, so we can't really let up on that. And then finally, on the bobcat front, we've got the Bobcats and Bluegrass Festival that's coming up on November seventh. It's a Friday afternoon. I would encourage everybody to attend. There may be some merch. Just putting it out there. So it's in your best interest. Plus, it's just a ton of fun, and Jim will be doing some presentations on what we can do to further protect our bobcats. And then the second thing I wanted to talk about was a couple of important initiatives that are starting on the Go Green front. Go Green is the committee that we have reinvigorated over the last couple of months under the leadership of Fran Williams, who is doing a terrific job with a series of different initiatives. First, we're launching Kiowa Conversations. It's kind of a sister act to the R World series, so when R World isn't having a program at three o'clock on Thursday afternoons, be on the lookout, because Kiowa Conversations may well be taking that space over here in town hall with a series of different presentations on resiliency efforts. Resiliency, conservancy, environment, ecology, all things relating to the environmental health of the island. The first one we're starting is on—our kickoff date is November thirteenth. It'll be a program on composting. We have an expert coming out who's going to go through the hows and whys and wherefores of composting. And then we have a program with the Material Recovery Facility in North Charleston. We're going out on a field trip on December fourth. Public will be invited. Don't know how limited we're going to be in terms of attendance, but it could be really interesting to see this massive recycling center and how it all works. And then finally, I want to thank the Golf Resort once again for a partnership with respect to the marathon. They've agreed to take all of the food and do composting, and our Go Green Committee is going to be volunteering out there to help. Roger, thank you again for continued support. Really very much appreciate it. That's it for me.
Thank you. Councilmember Farrell.
Yeah, I have four items. I'll go through them really quick. The first one is really a question for Jim and maybe for you, Ms. Kay. We talked about second-generation coagulants, and we talked about pesticide companies, but I'm sure there's a lot of individuals buying rat poison. Is there a way that we could offer a list of either approved or maybe ones that they should avoid? Because when I went to Home Depot to buy it, it was—I spent probably forty minutes reading the labels and trying to figure out what I should buy and what I shouldn't buy. That might help individuals to know what to do, if that's something we can—it's possible, or is it already exist, and I don't know that it exists?
So on our website now, on the Save Kiowa Bobcats page, we do have a list of the two active ingredients that are safe alternatives, as well as some brand names of products that would contain the appropriate one. But as of January first, all of the second-generation anticoagulants are restricted use, so they cannot be sold in Home Depot or Lowe's. So you cannot—as a—as an individual consumer, you can't legally purchase these compounds. So you can't—you've got to go out of your way to find them as a homeowner. You'd have to order them online.
So anything that you buy in Home Depot as rat poison should be okay?
Is not going to be a second-generation anticoagulant.
Okay.
If you buy it here in this state.
Correct. Yes. Now, you can still potentially buy it at Tractor Supply.
Get it ordered online, or yeah.
You can certainly order it online.
I think it might be good—if it's not a huge effort—to, once a month or something, post it on—not—have it so that we don't have to go in, dig for it. Push it out to folks, so they know this is what you can buy through our email blast.
Yeah, and that suggestion's been made, and I think it's a good one. You know, yeah, I mean, it's tough to, you know, read ingredients and try to figure out what's in everything that you—
I'm a chemical engineer, and I had a tough time with it, so.
So simply saying, right, if you go buy, you know, Tomcat so-and-so product, that's going to be, you know, one that you can use and will be safe and effective.
Yeah, if we could push that out rather than have it being coming up and going to the bobcat website and finding it.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
It's a good idea.
Number two, we did not have a Ways and Means meeting today. There was no new business. There probably will be some for next time, but nothing from Ways and Means. However, on Friday, we had Audit Committee meeting, and we reviewed our year-end financial audit with our auditors, and the report will be coming out and will be approved by the board probably next time. Probably more important to me is we also had a report on our financial controls assessment, and I'm very excited to eventually release that. It'll come out by year end, would be my expectation. It's a fifty-page report. It'll be available for everybody, but I think we're going to—
It is a draft report.
It's a draft. It'll be finalized by year end, but in addition so that people don't have to read fifty pages and interpret it, we're probably going to contract for an executive summary, kind of seven pages that gives you the highlights. The good news is, there were a couple of—I think there were twenty-seven findings. I think eight were material, as they decided, but they're of little consequence. And so we'll also have a plan for corrective action for the twenty-seven items, and especially the eight, and a timeframe for doing that. But the short answer, the short messages, they found us to be very, very healthy, not just from a financial standpoint, but a financial control standpoint. There's a few things we can do to get better, but it was very satisfying to know that we are in very, very good shape, thanks to the hard work of our administrator and our treasurer, and people who've come before us. The previous audit committees have done a lot of work, too. So thank you to all of those folks. And then lastly, I'd like to just remind everybody, there is a—I think it's Garden and Gun this weekend. If you haven't gotten an email from Lauren Beadle, you probably will get one. I'd encourage everybody to attend. But just please remember that this is, in part—and I want to use my words carefully here—it's not sponsored by the town, but it's funded by the town through SATAC's monies. This is something that the SATAC Committee and then ultimately the Town Council voted to support, and I just wanted to encourage everybody to attend this town-supported event this weekend. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Farrell. Just want to kind of qualify one thing. I'm not sure the phrasing is that critical, but my recollection is that there were two things that constituted findings. The rest were observations.
Right.
And it's findings that are somewhat higher level, but I think with regard to those two findings, they weren't deemed to have any material—
No material consequences.
—impact or consequences. Nonetheless, there are a lot of stuff that we need to tighten up and do better, and that's exactly why we did this report.
Exactly.
Councilmember Spencer.
I don't have any comments.
The town administrator.
Just one comment. I'm not sure how many of you are—receive the Rational Roads email, but I received the one today, and very important one. It's in regards to the transportation sales tax that is going to be on the ballot in November. A representative from the county is coming. Right now, the mayor had invited them to come present that to you all next month. But there's a survey that they pushed out. If you have the opportunity, please review that, take the survey. They have listed eight priorities. The eighth priority that was listed was BoHicket Road south of Plowground Road. If you read their suggestions—
This was Rational Roads' priority, not the county.
This is Rational Roads', and their suggestions were a lot of different roundabouts and maybe left- and right-turn lanes, but they're asking people to please take the survey, so if you have opportunity, review it, take it. But also, we will have someone here spend a few minutes with a presentation next month.
I would just note with regard to the Rational Roads' recommendations, always very thoughtful, full of good and useful information. Their recommendations tend to be focused on central and northern Johns Island, so there were no recommendations that they were going to be making to the county with regard to either Betsy Karson to improve safety, or, you know, even though they talked about bikeways and pedways, nothing south of the River Road and Betsy Karson intersection, and no improvements along River Road either. So those are things that we might want to take into consideration.
The private gate was essentially here, but it was all the way down to the very last priority.
Yeah, and it talked about, for example, car to service on Maybank, which would certainly be helpful and supportive, but nothing about, for example, getting car to service all the way down to at least Freshfields Village for the benefit of employees that work there.
And I would just add to that survey that they have a section where you can comment, so that's where I think the residents here can add comments, because they're providing all that information to the county.
And I might encourage, if there happen to be any large business owners in the audience, that there would be an opportunity to comment as well with regard to car to service and opportunities to have better transportation options for employees here on Kiowa Island.
That is it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to old business, the first item is second and final reading ordinance twenty-five dash ten, which is the changes that we previously approved with regard to—on first reading to the land—to the use tables. I would invite our planning director to provide a recap of where we were and what's before the council for consideration today. As council members may recall, we spent a fair amount of time on this matter, discussing this matter, at our last council meeting. We did ultimately approve it on first reading, but anticipated that there would be some changes. There was a lot of discussion, not so much about the core substance of the changes to the use table, but for better or for worse, a lot of conversation about accessory structures. And then we discussed this issue again, along with others, at our nearly four-hour or more-than-four-hour workshop. Again, a lot of discussion at that point in time, not about the broader issues related to the use table, the changes to the use section, but focused again primarily on accessory structures and particularly sports courts. So—but John can kind of provide an update of where we were, where we are now, and then we can open it up to the discussion.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This particular ordinance is under consideration of second and final reading. You all have received first reading already. If you recall, this ordinance was sent back to the Planning Commission upon first reading, and where the Planning Commission made recommendation on accessory structures. At that time, the Planning Commission discussion really centered around sports courts, specifically regarding tennis, padel, pickleball, or other sports courts. That particular discussion at the Planning Commission round was trying to eliminate, or at least mitigate, potential impacts of noise, sighting, lighting, buffering, from the potential impacts of what would be in a residential zoning district for accessory structures. Since then, at our September twenty-third Town Council workshop, there was heavy discussion regarding that similar—that same factor. And so what's before you today, and consistent with the Planning Commission's recommendations, the only modification that you see before you in the second reading is under Section Five, Standards for Accessory Structures in Residential Districts, particularly Item B. Where now the recommendation, or at least the ordinance as drafted, states that private sports courts may be approved as a special exception by the Board of Zoning Appeals pursuant to the approval criteria set forth in Section twelve dash one sixty-one, special exception. And so in addition to those, there are a few items that have been added that would help to mitigate the risk associated with a potential sports court in a residential zoning district. That first one is that the sports court is constructed in no less than thirty feet from any adjoining property. If you recall, our previous ordinance contemplated a ten-foot distance—I'm sorry, twenty-feet separation between adjoining properties. This increases that from twenty to thirty. The additional no lights for the sport—
John, just one qualification. You said our current ordinance, but you— John, just one qualification. You said our current ordinance, but you meant our current ordinance only has the 20 feet with regard to tennis courts, but your, but the recommendation, what we approved on first reading from the Planning Commission was 20 feet, correct?
Yes, 20 feet was in the original ordinance and, I'm sorry.
The original ordinance, the 20 feet, only applies to tennis courts.
Tennis courts, correct, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. The second item there, that no lights for the sports court shall be permitted, that's a continuation of what represents in the original code that lighting would not be allowed for private tennis courts. The third is that the sports court is adequately screened and buffered on all sides from adjacent properties or streets using landscaping. And so collectively, those items would be an additional, would be additional conditions that need to be met, along with approval by the Board of Zoning Appeals in order for a property owner to have a private tennis court as permitted under accessory structures. The one thing that has been stricken, if you see under Section B, sport court fences or walls that do not exceed 13 feet 6 inches in height, that's been eliminated. The original code referenced a 12-feet maximum height regarding fences and walls. Planning Commission, at their deliberation, decided to recommend that that be increased to 13 feet 6 inches to accommodate padel, pickleball, I'm sorry, padel courts. And so that is now strictly similarly to align with the potential impacts of the visual concerns of fences and walls in the residential zoning district area. So that's the substantive changes in this section, or at least the most recent since our last discussion. I can answer any questions that you might have.
Let me provide, if I might, John, a little more context about this particular formulation, which is before council now, and it's, it was an attempt to try to thread the needle and balance what were very different views on these issues. Some, they were kind of pro-property rights, some we'd like to ban things altogether. Just back up for a minute and understand that our current zoning code does not restrict accessory structures. It does not restrict sports courts at all. What it does say is, it specifically references two types of accessory structures, and saying that tennis courts, if you have a tennis court as an accessory structure, it has to be, there has to be a 20-foot setback from either sideline, and a fence can't be more than 12 feet high. What the Planning Commission recommended, and I'm not quite sure I understood exactly what led to that, but I think there was a fair amount of back and forth, is to amend the provision in the current zoning code, which applies only to private tennis courts, and increase the height limit, so expand it to be all tennis, all sports courts, and expand the height limit simply to accommodate padel, but that would not accommodate, for example, if somebody wanted to put an outdoor squash court, because that's a 20-foot height, or a racquetball court, which is 15-foot height. At least to me, that didn't make particular sense, but that's neither here nor there. What this attempts to do is not prohibit sports courts, nor to simply permit sports courts. It's to say, it is a, and it's an accessory structure that may be permitted subject to now these new conditions. The two conditions that are written into the code are the 30-foot setback rather than 20, and buffering. Beyond that, any sports, anybody who wants to build a sports court would have to go and get approval from the BZA. The BZA would then apply the standards under the separate section of the code, which would include community impact and everything. So they would hear from their neighbors about whether, in fact, this would be constitute a nuisance or not. So that's what this is intended to do, is to try to, again, balance as best we could, kind of competing views on these issues. So questions for John?
I.
But, I mean, if you have questions, otherwise, we can, I would entertain a motion, and then we can have discussion.
I guess I'll use these as questions.
Okay.
And it's not about sports courts. So kind of just going through, with the fine tooth comb, the principal uses, couple of questions. I'm gonna apologize to Mr. Warren up front. In PR-OC, why do we have conditional approval for single-family detached? It seems like it doesn't fit for.
So the, so.
I'm gonna ask the same question about single-family detached, attached, no townhouses, multifamily. I think duplex, we have duplex, and I love those places, Ocean Course, but why, single-family to start?
So the first thing I recognize is the PR-OC is specifically one parcel that's the Ocean Course, related to the clubhouse and the cottages that were built in 2020, I believe, 2019?
Whenever, yeah.
Yeah. And so they already were conditionally approved based on a set of conditions. What 's being recommended here is that opposed to the by right permitted use, we're changing it to align with the conditions that are already within our, in that zoning section of PR-OC. So at the, give me one second, I'll reference those.
So my question is, I mean, duplex seems to fit, and that's what they have, and personally, I like them, if that makes a difference. But single-family detached doesn't seem to fit in that zoning district. And multifamily, I don't think anybody would want, including Mr. Warren, would want multifamily. I'll take that back, you might.
So, under.
On the Ocean Course.
Under that, the conditions that they are, they may be attached and integrated with non-residential buildings, and that there should be no more than four dwelling units in any building. So there's a very narrow scope of what potentially can happen based on, on that condition for, so whether or not it's a duplex or a townhome, I don't think that, from my perspective, I don't think that there's a difference in the application of a duplex versus townhome.
It's really the single-family and the multifamily is what.
So I think what he's asking, John, is, understand the conditional change from permitted to conditional for duplex and townhouses, but it doesn't sound like single-family and multifamily are consistent with the existing condition. So rather than conditional, which you could approve, should it be?
Either deleted or maybe special, but it doesn't seem to be conditional is consistent with the use of that zoning code.
The dwelling unit type isn't associated in the condition, so.
Stop.
Yeah.
Single-family homes at the Ocean Course seems inconsistent with what the Ocean Course is owned for. And this is conditional approval?
You would recommend that it be by right?
No, not allowed, or.
Allowed.
Maybe special approval.
I think it, in following what the future land use designation is for that particular parcel, it is for recreation with limited residential. So I think the limited residential can be in any kind of format. So I wouldn't necessarily say it would necessarily has to be single-family detached or attached. It would be designated just limited residential. So the, I think it's consistent with the comp plan currently aligned.
Okay, so we'll agree to disagree there, because I don't think, just because it allows residential, doesn't mean single-family. You've got four different categories, so if you're gonna be explicit about it. But that, okay, okay, I've got my answer. Thank you. Second one is, under CS-2 on the second page, you're permitted business and professional organizations and social and civic organizations in a community, what is that called, community services, CS-2?
Yes.
That doesn't seem to be consistent with the CS-2 designation, putting businesses and professional organizations, or civic and social. Maybe civic, but not social. You see what I'm talking about?
Yes, under CS-2.
Second page.
Yes.
Business and professional organizations. Why would they fit in CS-2?
Most, what I would say, Kiowa's pretty unique in just the complementary of our primary, what I would call zoning districts. So whether it's residential or commercial resort, those would be what identify as a primary. Uniquely, everything, what I would call accessory or secondary falls, would fall into that support category under sort of support services. And uniquely, the CS-2 only applies to one parcel on the island. I would, I would also call that out as well. That only applies to one particular parcel.
So why permit it when I just have it excluded? It's only one parcel.
I mean, this is what the Planning Commission recommended, that this, that no changes be to that particular section of the community support.
Okay.
I think it's, I think you highly unlikely see.
I just don't like the inconsistency. You say you're highly unlikely, but it's permitted by right, and it's only one piece.
That doesn't mean that someone will propose that. It's just an allowed use. And based on the property owner, we don't anticipate any changes there.
And if the property owner changes, then it's permitted still. Okay. Moving on. Parks and Recreation, the third page. I have a little bit of concern about the restaurants with or without alcohol being conditional approval. And it's more about the size that they can be. If you look through the details, size can be pretty big, but it was that, was there any discussion about allowing restaurants in Parks and Recreation, given the size that are appropriate?
Yeah, so the challenging piece that was discussed regarding our Parks and Recreation zoning district, it isn't the traditional open space in recreation. It encompasses a mixture of uses, which for Kiowa, you have anything from the.
Olin Alley's to the Nest.
The Nest. So it was trying to find what's an appropriate balance and scale. The 2,000 square feet is relatively small when you think of a larger restaurant size. So I think that that seems appropriate. But most of it, I think, it's because of the unique sort of category of PR for Kiowa, where you're encompassing sort of a mixture of different types of uses.
Okay. I think it makes sense for a resort, but Parks and Recreation, beside, because they're side-by-side, where the resort owns some stuff that's parks, just seemed a little confusing to me. I'm gonna be, only one more, I think. Advertising services for the Ocean Course. Why is that, this is not including advertising signs. So what advertising services would you, I don't know what advertising services is, I guess. Maybe, maybe I should start there.
Yeah, I'm trying to recall the conversation regarding, because we did have discussions on advertising services and radio broadcasting for that particular section. I don't think that there was an extensive discussion with the Planning Commission on that particular section, and they left it, I think, as, as recommended.
It's just strange. It is not allowed anywhere else except in commercial, and then you call it out for the Ocean Course. But it's, and again, I'm trying to protect the Ocean Course from.
Yeah.
Is it because of tournaments?
So it just seems inconsistent. But, okay, this is definitely the last one, and this is Communication Towers on the fourth page. It's not permitted in RST-1 or RST-2. Don't we have one in RST-2 now, on top of the sanctuary?
Yes, in RST-1.
Should we allow for that? Should those be conditional, RST-1, RST-2? Otherwise, how do we get it on top of the sanctuary? Page six of 22, if you're.
Six of 22.
Yep, middle of the page, sorry.
Yep.
Right below other non-residential development.
What?
It should be conditional, right?
Yeah, I would, I would agree there that RST-2 should be conditional, or would, would support it being conditional in that, that particular category. I think this, what you see here was contemplated on our existing towers. The one being on the roof of the sanctuary should probably be accounted for within, within the resort category. Our robust discussion already in Communication Towers, I think, would capture any potential impacts on the, all of the merits that we've just done through the Communication Towers process. But staff would support that, that modification to that section.
So I would, I guess, can I, we're not into the motion yet, so I can't make a motion. So, okay. So I'm done. Thank you for the question. Thank you for the help with.
Hold for your potential amendments.
Yep. Yeah, I'll wait. My turn. Thank you.
John, I have just one question.
Yes.
Why was PD eliminated?
So PD was eliminated as the uses that would be proposed for plan development would be established or drafted by the property owner. And so that would already be there, customizing whatever uses would be allowed.
Would all be negotiated.
Us calling it out specifically in a table was sort of unnecessary in a way.
We'd negotiate all of it.
Yeah, negotiate everything. We don't want to specify what might specifically be allowed or prohibited. Other questions for John?
John, a couple as well. Remind me why the, with this, the conditional slash special exception, how that works? When, when is it conditional, and when is it special exception?
So you would refer to the conditional use reference, and if there is, within that conditional use reference, a specific direction to special exception, that would, that would trigger the special exception. So it's not a, more so, it's really condition, conditional use, but special exception would be required based on some of the conditions. So we, we left both, the CNS, under those categories.
Okay. Am I right in conditional, you can approve, the planning director can approve, and special exception has to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals?
Correct.
That's your answer.
Yeah. And then, based on our, what are the proposed changes with respect to the parking regulations in 12-128, I'm looking at the parking use table for R2, R1, and R2, and R3. I mean, what we, what we are contemplating is, there will be parking lots. They will be fairly small, but they will be, there will be required parking lots. That is guest or visitor parking associated with new multifamily townhouse.
So that's a good refer, a good point. The parking that's labeled in the use table is for parking lots that are not associated with a particular development. So if it was a standalone parking lot.
Standalone parking.
Yeah, that, that would be.
Not, not.
Something that would be a required minimum parking standards for new multifamily buildings. So that would.
Okay, okay, all right.
Thank you for that clarification, John. No other questions for John? I would entertain a motion for approval of the revised ordinance. Is there a second?
Second.
Now, further discussion, any proposed changes?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, Luke. I'd like to propose a change, or two changes, maybe it's three, that we, in residential or a column, PR-OC eliminates single-family detached and single-family attached, and have them not available, but definitely keep C for duplex, and I'd leave C for multifamily. So no single-family, and then.
Multifamily would still, I think, pursuant to the condition of use, would be limited to no more than four.
Correct.
Yeah, that's okay.
And then also propose that, under Communication Towers, that they be conditionally approved.
Can we, might I suggest that we take these in serial fashion?
Sure.
Okay. Motion to amend the use table with respect to single-family attached and detached in the PR-OC designation. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
I would just add, in, for this particular.
Can I ask a question at this point? As I just mentioned, you said you want to change the zoning at the Ocean Course on the PR-OC, take away single-family and make it multifamily. Is that what you want to do?
No, the, the, the motion is to eliminate the single-family attached or detached as a permitted use in PR-OC, but to retain duplex. or detached as a permitted use in PROC, but to retain duplex and multifamily as a conditional use, which is part of what the planning commission recommended.
And it, and it's downgraded from permitted to conditional by the planning commission. It's a recommendation.
Thank you for the explanation.
I just don't understand that at all.
So the, the, the.
You don't understand the.
The, the current cottages that are on the ocean course would fall under those categories? So, and then the.
They'd be duplexes.
No.
It would, it would permit the, consistent with the other limitations, but it would otherwise, this would not restrict like the expansion of the ocean course cottages that are there now. The motion that has been proposed by council member Farrell is to prohibit single family homes being built in PROC.
To not.
And let me ask you a quite clarifying question and is, what's there now, I think is fine. Are they duplexes or they single family attached?
Those are detached.
They're not detached. They're, it's not a single family detached, cause you could put two groups in there.
Four bedroom suites.
They're four cottages.
They have a living area and four bedrooms.
So are they multifamily? What are they?
But they're not single family residences. They're not owned, they're not owned by a resident.
But in terms of design.
I have to, yeah, it's not about the ownership though.
One entryway, four bedrooms, four bedrooms and one living room for the whole process.
So how are they? What are they?
They're beautiful.
I agree. I absolutely agree. We should stay there.
But that's my question. What are they? How are we defining them?
And the, the idea of taking, when the original zoning was done, and I understand that we're in a different scenario, but if the idea was not to put multifamily up there, I don't think you want multifamily up there because, and that means by definition, multifamily has so many floors, so many units per floor and per building.
And the better use there is, at some point down the road, if ever, if anybody wants to do it, would be single family, cause there's a limited amount of space for it and you have a li, limited amount of homes there. So the density goes way down. You've created a, a higher density opportunity, which I would get killed for arguing against it, but from a, in a real estate perspective, but you're, you're, you're going counter to what I think is the best use for the land, for the community and everybody up there.
Just, just to be clear, the current code before the planning commission made its recommendations would have allowed, would, all of those different categories would be permitted by right.
Yeah.
Single family attached, single family detached, duplex and multifamily would all be allowed by right. I think the planning commission generally agrees with you.
Right.
Uh, and so the planning commission recommended, and what we approved on first reading, was all of those be changed from permitted by right to conditional uh, uh, use approval, subject to the conditions approved.
So that's a down zoning from what it was before?
No, no, no.
Is it? Uh-uh.
It's not considered.
It was.
It's not considered down zoning, it's just that it changed it from permitted by right to.
Based on the recommendation, is the only change would be the, the, the type of residential unit that would be permissible, based on the recommendation. So uh, the only remaining areas for that parcel would potentially be based on the current development agreement is maxes out at 20 units possible. Um, and so there's a couple more areas that you potentially could have additional um residential out there, so.
Go back to the question, what's out there? What is it?
But, but again, John, that's with respect to the current development agreement. I think the planning commission is looking at all this on a go-forward basis.
Correct. Yeah, there would be attached units.
Pardon?
Attached units.
You'd call those single family detached?
Attached.
Cause they're one entrance and four bedrooms or single family attached?
Attached.
What's attached?
I don't think they're attached. They're attached to the, to the building. The units are attached.
They're district cottages.
Just cottages, attached cottages.
They're not attached to each other.
No.
They're not attached.
No, I'm saying the, the four units.
Actually, guest rooms.
Yeah.
Four buildings with four guest rooms in each one.
Right.
Yeah, I was wondering if it was hotel.
Suite or a guest room. I don't think it's a classification that exists.
So is, can, can you have like two different families stay in there?
If they know each other and they're friendly.
Well, you could have two different families stay at any house.
We wouldn't rent it to two separate families right now.
So that seems like it's um sort of like a hotel.
Yes.
Yeah, I was wondering if it was hotels and ends.
And so, I mean, it tells.
It raises an interesting question as to what it is that, whether those, whether that, whatever it is, however you want to characterize, is actually consistent with current zoning code as to what is permitted in PROC. One could argue, I think, they're not. And then the question is, if we're okay with that, whatever it is, what do we call it and do we want to specifically permit that by right on a go-forward basis or permit it conditionally?
And, and to be clear, I, I love them. I think they're great.
I understand what you, I know that. I, I think that the point here, Mr. Mayor, is when the last development agreement was being done, it was being done with the intention of doing those guest rooms out there. And it, those were, I thought the language in the development agreement was structured in a way that explained what they were. If it's not clear, then that language probably going forward needs to change because the use is what everybody anticipated it would be. And the use is what we would anticipate moving forward, although there, part of this parcel, I believe, goes out onto what we would call the pass Palom field out there between the clubhouse and the first tee. So that's what part, this is covered by this, the zoning too, and so that was intended. Someday, when we never wanted to do another major championship or anything, if we wanted to develop that property, we wanted it more than likely to be single family because we didn't want the multifamily out there. We just didn't want it. So I don't know how you accommodate that. That's why I raised my hand. I just wanted to make sure that we didn't end up with something that we all didn't want.
Well, I, you know, what, what strikes me is that these aren't residential units and, and, and we, and I think the idea is not to permit residential units in PROC. Really, what you're looking at, I think, is, John, um, a, um, we're down to the hotels or ends category. And this would be, hotels or ends would be a conditional use in PROC and the condition would be that they would be like they are now. It would, you can't, you would be, they would be limited in size, but they.
Since nothing like that can be built behind the second gate from a zoning standpoint, you can't put hotels in. And that's why the zoning had to be specially crafted for that space out the ocean course.
Well, the, the, that second gate issue, that is a private covenant issue, so that's different than the zoning code. So.
I would have built more of them.
No, they could be more, their private covenant restriction could be more restrictive, which in this case they are.
Call your builder.
So I, John, I mean, does that make any sense?
Yeah, what I was gonna do is uh go back and review, just to ensure the development agreement language was consistent. So um, just to, just to verify what the development, development agreement language is, because that's the, that's how this ordinance was predicated, PROC.
So, yeah, I, so I need clarity on that before I'm willing to vote on the latest.
Well, would I, uh, uh, might I suggest that the mover withdraw his motion for now?
And?
Uh, and, and we may offer a, a new motion, but uh, right now, your, your motion is simply to eliminate the conditional, any permitted or conditional for single family detached and single family attached, which may be fine, but I think you, what I mean, the idea is, these aren't single, these aren't residential units. And the question is residential units, do we want to permit residential units in PROC? But what are there now are the equivalent of, and it's a small inn or, you know, an inn with three separate little buildings.
So I guess I would, um, my motion would be to exclude all of this, just have it be blank, the, the residential, single family attached or detached duplex multifamily, and put either, put conditional on hotels and ends.
I, I, I think.
I think, based on the way you described the use.
And that conditional use would be si, uh, made consistent with however those things are described in the current development agreement. Does that make?
That makes sense to me. The, the only question is, how do you memorialize conditional being the same thing that's already out there or something similar?
It's limited residential associated with golf, golf course operation and it categorizes dwelling units, may be single family attached duplexes or multifamily. So based on that, the, the recommendation of eliminating the single family detached, I think that would make it consistent. The, you'd recommend eliminating attached as well?
I think to be safe, I'd do eliminate single family detached and eliminate multifamily and leave single family attached and duplex and approve hotel and ends.
So the, the language which referenced dwelling units is single family attached duplexes or multifamily. So I would recommend that we modify also the PROC section if we're gonna go and.
Okay.
Do that, that conditionally. Um, that would be uh, to allow those two to be consistent with residential associated with uh golf course operation as, as this language.
Makes sense.
I, I didn't hear that last part. It said, still said residential?
So the language that, how it was predicated was re, limited residential associated with golf course operation. So that's the, the language referencing the PR dash OC.
Okay, but those, but that, but I think, but this, it's not, I, that may be what's like.
It's, it's more of, I think, should be corrected. However, I think that the intent of how it was crafted needs to be cleaned up based on, on the development agreement language, consistent with our zoning code.
I think it suffered through the same description issue when this original was done. How you describe it?
Because it's, it's marrying how our residential density is calculated and that's the reason why the, the density and max dwelling units, that's, that's how it's being driven. So from a accommodation standpoint, if you will, we can make that change.
So why can't we, again, we, we're gonna have to, with, I think, withdraw your motions. Too complicated to further amend your motion at this point in time, but it, it strikes me that what we want to do is, is delete the conditional or permitted in residential, add something in hotels, ends or cottages.
I would.
And then PROC, there would be, there were gonna be a conditional use and that conditional use is described herein would be, you know, a, a, that, uh, guest rooms in a, in a, you know, no more than certain guest rooms in, 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 in building, in, in, in a limited number of buildings or something, no more than number of buildings with a number of guest rooms.
And then, and that would work in the absence of a development agreement. And in a development agreement, we can be more specific and describe today's state or a future state. That you might want six rooms or 10, eight or whatever. But that would clean this up so that it's consistent. Sorry.
So could I renew my request for you to withdraw?
I withdraw my.
There was a second to that. Whoever made the second, would you?
That was me. Unsecond it.
Um, I would now make a new, I would offer a new motion to, under the PROC, uh, um, not table, but.
Residential category.
But what am I, column.
Column.
Uh, to remove the, uh, both as permitted or conditional uses.
Okay.
Residential to add, that would have been on.
Hotels and ends, third page, five of 22.
Each five?
Yes, hotels or ends, add hotels, ends or cottages. So just add or cottages. And then there would be in PROC, we would add a conditional use and that the conditional use itself would describe as best we can what those cottages at the ocean course currently are.
So I liked it until you added cottages, only because we've got actual homeowner associations called Kewa cottages, which are not these.
Well, this is a separate category for non-residential category.
But if we call it bungalows.
Non-residential.
Yeah, this is, this is a, this is.
I'm fine with that then.
Okay.
Thanks.
You could call it bungalows too.
Yeah.
Arizona owners doesn't recognize cottages as a residential.
Yeah. Yeah, this, this is out, this is outside residential. This is a non-residential use.
Mr. Warren, what, what do you call them?
Cottages.
You call them cottages?
And we can describe the, you know, maximum number of, of bedrooms per cottage, that type of thing. I think we would, should be able to describe what this thing is.
I mean, I would just lean on what the, at, for today, what the current PR dash OC language is regarding those con, conditionals of maximum density or if there's something further that you want to go.
No, no, because that encompasses a wide range of stuff. This is describing this thing in the, in the conditional use.
I'm saying, if we're adding a condition in a different category, we would need language to pull from. And so that language, I'm, I'm just recommending that language come directly from the PR OC category.
Which is A right now, under, can you use the same 120103A?
Correct.
Yes, so you just pull that over.
Which?
12103A.
I was saying, if they wanted more than what was described there.
No, no, but that, that, no, I don't, that language itself is problematic. Yes, I know. I, I got, yes, that.
It's, it's not a, it's not a, is a hotel or in a dwelling unit?
Is what?
Is a hotel or in a dwelling unit? I don't believe it is. Do we define a hotel or inn as a dwelling unit? No, we do not. So that's why we can't use that language there. That's, doesn't describe what is there now.
So what was there now is a one, this one building with dwelling units.
Come back and describe it next month.
It's not, it's not, they're not dwelling units.
But we could, we can put together the language and come back next month.
Mr. Mayor? Why don't we go with your motion and have John come back next month with the language it described specifically?
Well, this is on uh second reading.
Yeah. It can be tabled.
You can table it, yeah.
For next month.
I don't want her to table it.
No, um, I, I mean, I.
Can't we just eliminate it right now and then revise it later on? So that we can take care of this ordinance.
Yeah, let's just come back and re-describe hotels categories after this. Just put it in as is and then have him come back.
Leave it as is for now?
Leave it as is and then next, you're not gonna build a cottage in the next 30 days, are you, Mr. Warren?
We didn't get anything done.
Neither do we.
We'll just have him come back and describe it to us.
Okay. Um, I withdraw my motion. I don't think there was yet a second. Okay. Now, we don't have any motions pending with regard to the.
Justin, we keep your motion and just describe it in the PROC.
But what, but their question is, what, that, what we are approving, we, we can approve subject, that, that, and the council can agree upon that, that the planning administrator and I and the town attorney will craft language that, that best describes the ster, the, the status quo. If council is fine with that, we can do that, then we don't have to come back.
Let's do that.
I don't think, I don't think we would have to come back to council, would we?
If we don't, if we don't have the language, we gotta start out the language now, we're trying to bring it back.
Can we say four sleeping quarters?
Can we say four sweeping quarters?
Why can't you just approve this and come back with a new ordinance?
We can, we can, we can simply not...
We've been talking about this now for 30 minutes. Let's just approve it and then come back with another revision.
What is, so what is, what then, we're, what is, if there are no further amendments on this particular issue, then what is before us is simply the four conditional approval categories for residential and P-R-O-C. I don't think we're gonna be comfortable with that, but we can bring that back as a separate, separate amendment.
Correct.
Okay. All right, so there's no pending amendment right now on this particular matter. Are there other proposed amendments?
I'd like, sorry, I'd like to propose we put conditional improvements on cell towers for RST 1 and 2.
There is a motion. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. You said just the RST 1?
And 2.
And 2.
1 and 2.
Approved. Aye, sorry, aye.
It's, that, that motion is approved. Are there further proposed amendments to what is pending before council?
So I'm submitting a proposed amendment to section 12-104, subparagraph 5B, which has to do with sports courts.
What page are you on, Mr. Burner?
This is page 19 of 22.
Thank you.
I see that there are lots for sale currently that are greater than one acre in size, so they could potentially be used as sports courts. So, I am proposing to eliminate archimsite, to change the wording in subparagraph B, to just say, private sports courts are not allowed.
I'll second that.
John, recall, remind me, have we defined sports courts elsewhere?
The last page.
Yeah, so, as part of this particular ordinance, we defined it, section 374.
All right, so now we would have discussion. The one thing I want, so there are two points that I wanted to highlight. Oh, you didn't vote yet?
No, there, there was a motion and a second. The only thing I'm, I'm, I'm trying to think through before we have discussion is, is this is a standards for, standards for execuory structure, execuory structures may be allowed in residential districts under the following conditions, and then we're saying they're not allowed. I'm, I'm just not sure that quite, that quite works structurally.
As I'm trying to understand, you're wanting to just eliminate sports courts in this, in residential districts?
Correct.
Okay.
And I would just clarify that my issue on this one, one issue was basketball hoops. And if you go to section 12, 374, definitions of residential driveway or paved parking area occasionally used for such activities is not considered to be a sports court. So, basketball hoops and driveways would not be included in this prohibition.
That's correct. Yeah, because it's not a sports court, per se.
We've got that covered already.
Yes.
So, and then any existing things that are sports courts would be deemed, would be non-conforming?
They'd be grandfathered.
There is a motion, there is a second. Is there further discussion?
Yeah, so, with all due respect to Mr. Burner and Ms. Kay, I would be voting against this. This, to me, seems like an overreach of governmental authority. I, I think it's restricting something based on perceived objections. You could have a sports court, and it's, I think the big objection is noise, and you could have a sports court on an acre of land, and with it buffered properly, you might not hear it at all. I, I think this is restriction of private property that's wholly unnecessary, and I wouldn't, I don't like to restrict property rights when there's no real common benefit for the community. It seems like the benefit is maybe to one neighbor or another, and not the community at large, and you're restricting a significant property right of an individual. So, I, I think that the, the goal is appropriate for noise control, but I think this is an overreach.
Well, I have three responses. One of them, a Fidel court cannot be adequately screened, in my mind. I don't think you can screen a Fidel court. Second, I'm considering, or I should say, I'm concerned with respect to the existing neighbors, where I just see on the Kiowa Island real estate site, there were three parcels that are greater than one lot in the middle of other communities, and all of a sudden, that community is going to have sports courts. I don't think that is fair to existing residents.
Why, I just question that, where why, why do you say they would be having sports?
Could, I said could.
Okay.
Because they're large enough parcels. They're all greater than one acre.
That's right, but they would still be, for so much...
I know, I said they could.
Subject, could be approved by the BCA?
Correct.
Okay.
And, thirdly, the other comment has to do with the aesthetics, and of interest, tab seven of today's meeting has to do with the development of a design review board. And this just smacks in the face of being contradictory of putting in a sports court. So I'll read it, it's on page one of three of tab seven of our document. It says, "The intent," and this is for the design review board, "is, is to enhance the island's character," and I'm pausing for emphasis, "preserve property values, and to protect the unique identity of the town of Kiowa Island. The design review process is intended to promote architectural design," and other words, it says, "to be in harmony with the natural environment." I don't think a sports court fits into that explicit intent of the design review board that we're talking about later on today.
Well, just in that latter point, I'm not kind of commenting on the substance of the motion at this juncture, but I would note that we do have sports courts all over Kiowa Island.
Well, we have things, but we're talking...
They're all over the resort, they're all over...
Not on pri... We have, we change ordinances, you change ordinances all the time, and I, I just personally think it's a mistake to have a sports court in the middle of a community and residential homes. That's just my opinion.
So, you guys can vote however you want. That's fine, I just wanted to point out that when you're referencing the incompatibility in the design review board, which applies to commercial and residential, that sports courts are, there, there are a bunch of sports courts on Kiowa Island. I mean, there are dozens of them.
Fine, so, but the point of the matter is, that's going, that's in this tab seven, is in harmony with the natural environment. It's not a sports court. And it talks about to preserve property values. I can see people being unhappy if all of a sudden a neighbor is putting in a Fidel court, because, as I just said before, you cannot properly screen that.
So, thank you for that, that was great, great information to know. I, I just think it's a slippery slope when you start picking out things to restrict on property rights. I, I would use your example, and I'd say you could extend that directly to swimming pools. They're not in harmony with nature, they're gonna cause noise to neighbors with kids screaming and hollering. Pools are used, you know, all day and into the night, and so I, I think, you know, if, if the next step would say, would we, should we be restricting swimming pools, I think you'd have an uproar. So, it's, I think the, the logic that you used is sound, but it could be applied to other things that we currently value. So I think it's, it's a valuation decision that I think the neighbor should make, not the town, in restricting the property rights.
All right, so I respectfully disagree. I understand your point entirely, a couple of feet comebacks. One, swimming pools are in the back of the house, and the few homes that I've saw that had sports courts, one of them, for example, was on Flyway that was taken down, they're in front of the home. As you're driving down the street, it's not hidden because it's behind your house, it's in front of your home. And I don't think that's the character of, of, of the community that we want to present. Now, we differ, and that's fine, so it's a democratic process, and vote the way you, you desire, but that's the basis of my motion.
So, I, I, my own view is, I thought, my own view is what we have before us is a reasonable balancing of competing interests, in that I would think an outright ban altogether, even if supported by the surrounding neighbors, is an overreach. But apart from that, so I will, I will vote against the amendment, but what I would maybe suggest, understanding that it sounds like there may be sufficient votes for your amendment to be approved, is suggest you slightly modify your amendment to simply say that under, under tab five, standards for accessory structures in residential districts, except as provided below, structures may be allowed in the residential districts under the following conditions, and C would then be, private sports courts are prohibited.
I would like to see the wording.
That's what I just said. Except as provided below.
I understand. Can you say that again, please?
Yes, standards, it would say, except as provided below, accessory structures may be allowed in residential districts under the following conditions. Private swimming pools would remain A, fences would be B, C would be your, you know, private sports courts are prohibited.
I'm all right with that.
Is it private sports courts are prohibited in residential zoning districts?
Yeah, in residential zoning.
Correct.
Okay. And, so, would you offer, revise your amendment?
No, sure, I would revise it to what you just said, Mr. Mayor, going forward.
Okay. And who was seconded to that?
Madeline.
Madeline did.
I reinstated my second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Vote on the revised motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Nays?
Opposed.
Nay. The motion carries? That language is agreed to. Any other further amendments, proposed amendments to the revised ordinance? Hearing none, we now, I would entertain a motion to approve the ordinance 2025-10, as amended?
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is approved.
Just the amendments for RST 1, the courts, and then the cell towers.
Yeah, yeah.
Correct.
Yep. Moving on, John, you're still up. This is ordinance 25, 2025-19, and this is the base zoning standards relevant to various of the zoning districts.
Yes, our next ordinance is pending second reading as well. Under the changes that you'll note, not changes, but what's before you are base zoning districts. Primarily, the standards regarding lot coverage, building heights, and setbacks are what's been recommended by the planning commission, and I'll walk through those very briefly. Under our residential zoning districts, there are no changes being recommended to the R1 and R2 zoning districts. However, in the R3 zoning district, recommended change for townhouse and multifamily maximum lot coverage. The current allowances are 60%. Recommendation is to change that to 40% maximum lot coverage. There are no changes under the commercial zoning, base zoning district. As we switch to the resort categories, or RST 1 and RST 2, the discussions of the planning commission, recommendations are kind to align those two zoning districts with tiered maximum building heights, and so you'll see as the closer to the ocean, there's a lower maximum height. For the RST 1 zoning district, the current allowances of four stories, 70 feet height, that's being recommended to be changed to four stories and 55 feet maximum height. And the, there's now a oceanfront and non-oceanfront setback, similarly being constituted what's marriage, what's in the RS2 existing zoning, RS2 resort district categories of as building step away from the ocean, they're allowed to go taller. The changes regarding lot coverage in this particular section is a reduction in the 70% today to 50%. And those are the substantial changes there. I would direct you now to our Parks and Recreation zoning district. Our Parks and Recreation zoning districts, PR, are currently, there is allowance for 70% lot coverage as a max. This recommendation now reduces that to 60% maximum lot coverage, and that's also not just the PR, but also the P-R dash O-C Ocean Course Zoning District. There are no changes formally in the RS2O, which is the overlay, however, we just wanted to modify the graphics in there that reflects BBHE, which is our base building height in the graphic, so that's the one change that you see there. Those are a highlight of the, of the modified zoning district standards. As you recall, during our workshop on, in September, there was some discussion regarding maximum building heights, specifically the RST 1 property where the sanctuary is. There were no changes based upon discussion of that, that conversation, but I know council has some interest in trying to understand the impacts potentially to the RST 1 zoning district. So I'll pause there.
I have only one question, and I think it's easy. Why are there no rear setbacks under RST 1 and RST 2, when there are rear setbacks for everything else?
So the rear setbacks follows the oceanfront and non-oceanfront, so you would just skip down a line to, depending on the type of property, that would be your, your rear setback. So if it's on the ocean, the ocean would be the rear designation, so oceanfront. If we're looking at the RST 1, the...
Oh, okay, I got you. I got you, thanks.
Just for clarity, should you indent oceanfront and non-oceanfront, so it's clear that it's under the rear?
Yeah, we can do that.
I have two questions. What is BBHE?
Base building height elevation.
And how does that differ from BFE?
So, it's a term that we amended, I think, now in 20, Bruce, 21. So when the new flood maps were released in 21, the town modified our definition of, essentially, BFE.
And one port of freeboard?
To, not the one port freeboard, but what this does is align to the numeric value of the base flood elevation, and so, opposed to the new flood maps where there were lower heights, this allowed us to have the consistent elevations of the 2004 flood maps, which would have been higher. And so, opposed to allowing folks to build, opposed to the flood maps being lower, would allow folks to build lower, we revised that definition, so that the BBHE reflects the same designation, whatever flood elevation that you're in, that numeric value. So if you're in AE10, your base, your base building elevation would be 10. And so that, that number is essentially where you, where we would measure building height from.
Try that again.
So...
Base flood elevation?
So, base flood elevation...
I know what that is. That's the...
That's where we, that's where we...
Federal standard.
Yeah, so, that's where we essentially would be measuring the max building, building height. So in that graphic you see there, that's where we're starting, that 40, for example, 40 feet, we would start there.
So is BFE the same as BBHE?
No.
What's the difference?
So, what we did is, we keep the roof heights the same, we utilize the flood zone designation for 2004 flood maps.
Yep.
So let's say your property currently is an AE10 under the new map. On the 2004 map, it may have been a 12 or 13.
We're 14.
Okay, so you're 14, all right. So, what we're saying is, we take that numeric value from the 2004 flood maps, we call it that BBHE, which allows us to technically use the old flood map just for roof heights.
So, you've lowered the base, the first floor, but you've kept the roof the same height as 2004?
Right. The problem we were running into was with the new flood maps and the lowering of the BFEs.
Couldn't put a garage under the house.
Yeah.
Put a garage under the house.
Okay. Okay, the reason I ask, and this is why it's important, is, and I don't know what the answer is, but in all of these sections, you talk about maximum height. From what? BBFE or BFE or grade or?
BBHE.
I think you need to footnote that so that's clear what that maximum height is, because I was not clear.
So in our-
Unless it's there.
It's, it's in the definition of, of building height. So in 374, that we reference BBHE.
So maximum height is relative to BBHE for all of these. Got it?
Mr. Farrell, you done? I'm just waiting for you to-
Yes, thank you.
No, no worries. All right. Other than reading the numbers on the piece of paper, at our work session a couple of weeks ago, I had these questions, and I, we have, I haven't seen the answer, is basically, what does it mean? And what I'm getting at is that, is that, I love the Sanctuary Hotel. It's a beautiful piece of, of work. Right now, the revision is going to change the lot coverage from 70 down to 50%. So the question, part one, so I have to, I'm combining this with something else. What does that mean vis a vis the Sanctuary? What would be different in that hotel if we had a maximum lot coverage of only 50%? Something would have to give. And so what is that? Dovetailing with that, though, at the same time, later on this afternoon, we have proposed revisions to ordinance 12-128, which is for parking, okay? It looks like when you go through the parking changes, the Sanctuary would have to have more paved parking than it does now. So now we're doing two things at once. We're lowering the lot coverage to 50%, and then we're increasing the parking requirements by, and this is the issue, I don't have the ability to understand the difference of one space per guest room to what it was previously, one space per four people, allowing, requiring, not originally 50%, but now it's 75% parking for other uses like restaurants, bar, office, et cetera, and so forth. Another new requirement of having one space per employee for the largest site. These, these things are, I don't know what it means at the end of the day. I mean, are you only going to be able to build a bungalow then on this property if you have all of these lot coverage things? And that's what I'm having trouble grasping, because in the big picture, those two things combined, I don't know what that means at the end of the day. And the question is, what would, what could be built if you're looking at building the Sanctuary today? How would it be different with all these new regulations?
Well, the, the short answer is that there would be less footprint.
Yeah, I know, I know. So, but what does that mean? You're going to have 25% less guest rooms? I'm thinking it would have to be a much smaller facility.
Well, it doesn't-
Or a smaller pool, or, that's what I'm trying to get, something tangible. What's, what's the product that will be coming from there?
So I, I guess the easiest way to, to answer that is going forward, because this applies, going forward and apply to the Sanctuary. If there's an undeveloped lot, you would have to build a hotel. If you wanted to build a hotel, you would have to build a hotel that met these parameters.
Of course, I understand that.
So it would be a smaller hotel, because you would have more open space.
As a baseline, so I can understand what this is. There's two things happening. What, what would the new Sanctuary be restricted to if these regulations were in place? Is it 50% of its current size? Is it three quarters, or is it 10%? I, I don't know what all of these two regulation revisions mean at the end of the day.
I, I think one answer would be, what's the current lot coverage of the current Sanctuary on the current parcel it sits on? Is it 50%, 70% coverage?
I don't have an answer to, that I can-
It's, it's no- It's, yeah.
By how much?
20 to 25%.
Probably. And I mean, and I think that's what, what the Planning Commission, based on kind of the meetings I've attended and watched and listened to the discussion and had follow-up meetings, is saying, going forward, we want more open space. So yes, these structures would not take up, combined taking, parking and structures would not take up 70% of the lot. They'd only take up 50% lot. Same thing like we have residential.
I understand, I understand that's the goal, but I don't know what the end product is, and that's what I was looking for. So Mr. Warren said 25%. That's given me an indication of what the change of the product is.
Same kind of thing when you change the maximum lot coverage for a residential lot. It's the exact same kind of calculus as to, if it's only 33% lot coverage, you can kind of figure out the maximum, given the dimensions of the lot, you can figure out what the maximum size of the building is.
Not for, I can't do that sitting here, and nobody has been able to tell me other than Mr. Warren, who just said 25%. But that's all I'm looking for. I understand lot coverage means you're going to have to build something less. At the same time, you're going to have more parking. But I'm looking for an indicator of what that means.
Is the question, like, what would be, drawing up some concepts of what would be possible based on what's being recommended here to, as a sort of a graphical illustration?
Well, that's why I pick on the Sanctuary. So it, what would happen to the Sanctuary Hotel if it was going to be built?
It's difficult to, to do that based on the desires of whatever the property owner would entail. So the number of rooms, what associated accessories, restaurants, and that's-
Right. No idea what the developer would want to build, whether they want to have a convention center associated, chapel, salon.
Mr. Mayor, of course I understand, of course I understand that. But I'm trying to get an understanding of what that means, something tangible. Is it half, 10%? Seventy five? I know it's smaller.
If you just built the hotel, it might not impact-
You're avoiding the question. I'm trying to get something that's tangible. I, I know it's going to be smaller. Is it marginal or is it substantial?
Is it just the hotel, or is it a hotel with convention center?
The entire complex of the Sanctuary.
Mr. Mayor, in fairness, I'm not sure the question can be answered without the design. And, and here's why. Because you could have a design that had parking underneath the hotel, and that extra parking would be accommodated for, but it wouldn't change the footprint. So, and you can have a hotel that's got four wings, or you could have one box. And the box is going to be a more efficient use of space. So I, I appreciate where you're trying to ask, what you're trying to get to. I don't think the question can be answered without a design. I, I think the thing that I focus on here is, I think the Planning Commission has heard loud and clear from the community that they want smaller structures, and they want more parking. Parking is a problem across the island, regardless of where you go, from the Ocean Course, from the Marsh House, to the Cape, and every place in between. And the Sanctuary is, on a busy Friday night, I can't park there either. So I think that's what the Planning Commission is trying to address, is smaller, less imposing structures. And they still realize that depending on the design, it might not fully accommodate what they're trying to do, but this is their attempt to do that. Get smaller structures and better parking, and then leave it up to the professionals to design it in an optimal way from a business standpoint and from a design standpoint, given the regulations.
Can you give me an idea of something for today that exists? What is the lot coverage for the Sanctuary?
My, my guess, I don't know without looking at the plans, that they probably took-
Whatever the guidelines were at the time the Sanctuary was built, there was only one, each of us.
Yeah, I- So it was 70%?
Lot coverage was for that parcel. We didn't leave anything.
Yeah, I, I assume that they took advantage of the maximum lot coverage.
Okay, so it was 70% then?
Then it's 70% coverage, and that's what 70% coverage is.
69.8.
Let's just take about 20% off of that, and that's a little like.
Yes, yes. Okay.
John, just for my understanding, so there's multiple lots in each of these zoning districts, some of which are not developed yet?
For?
RST1 and RST2?
Yeah, so RST1 is sort of the East Beach area, RST2 is West Beach. So there are undeveloped parcels.
There are, there's multiple parcels then, okay. And so for existing developed parcels, they're non-conforming if whatever, and any modification has to comply with the new zoning. And then undeveloped is undeveloped, so the new zoning would apply.
Correct.
John, you said RST1 is-
RST1 is the East Beach area, so where the Sanctuary, Sanctuary is, RST2 is West Beach, where the Oden site, Conference Center, those areas.
Got it, thank you.
John, in general, I think that the Planning Commission's done a really admirable job in trying to reach a goal. Though my only question is, and again, I'm focused on kind of the, the oceanfront side, and I like the fact that it's been tiered, and you use that concept that Charleston tried to use. The zero stories and 10-foot height. I could see that being a pool closer to the ocean, but what would the 10-foot height? Can you speculate what that would be used for?
Yeah, so this, this was derived from the RST2 zoning category, and that intent to allow, like, a bath, bathrooms, those types for a small support for the pools, like-
Shower, something.
Shower, those types of things. Nothing that would be more, more than that.
Thank you.
Any other further questions? Comments?
I have a question. What, excuse me. What is the genesis of the change in the parking space standard?
We're not, we're not on that, on that right now.
It comes later.
That's a li-
That was in this one.
No, I, I brought it together because-
He raised it, but it's not, yeah.
No, I got all upset for her.
That one is first reading.
So this is an ordinance that we had approved, recommendation from Planning Commission on first reading. I'm not hearing any further discussion or proposed amendments to this. Did we actually have a motion for approval on second reading?
So moved.
Second?
I don't think we did.
Okay. Okay. If, if there is no further discussion or no proposed amendments, a motion, we have a motion, it's been seconded to approve the revised ordinance on second reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It is approved. New business. First item of new business, am I doing this? Are you doing this, Stephanie?
You can start at this, this parking.
This is the first reading of proposed ordinance 2025-25. A little background and context before I entertain a motion. So we've had some prior discussion, both at strategic planning meetings, as well as work that's being done in the Infrastructure and Public Works Committee with regard to franchise agreement-related issues. We have multiple utilities providing services in the town of Kiowa Island. All of them are operating the town of Kiowa Island. Most are, if not all of them, are accessing our public rights of way in one respect or another. But as it turns out, not all of them have either business licenses and/or franchise agreements. So that's something we need to try to address. We've already had preliminary conversations with multiple of the franchise owners regarding that, and I've had a conversation, and the staff has, with the town attorney and his colleague around a range of these issues. As an interim measure before putting in place either a detailed franchise ordinance or a, a still more robust franchise ordinance, but a draft franchise agreement, model agreement, could be adapted for each utility provider. We're making a couple of changes to try to address ongoing issues. The first, there are two, are we doing both of these to-
Yes.
Together? Okay. Currently, in our finance and taxation article of our municipal code, there is a provision, which is modeled on the Municipal Association of South Carolina Code, 4-317, says consent, franchise, or license required for use of the streets. It shall be unlawful for any person to construct, install, maintain, or operate in and on blah, 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 utilities in the town without a consent agreement or franchise agreement issued by the council. Well, right now, there are entities that are in violation of that. And it also specifies, the second, the 134-317-B, provide, deals with a franchise fee that also is set by the council. The first order of business is simply to move this, these provisions out of the business, the finance and taxation, the licensing article, and move them over into utilities article. It's something that's called public utilities now, but we will re, be re-titling that just utilities. So it's to move them out of the business license section and move them into utilities. The other change is to, right now, the only thing that's for all intents and purposes that's in the utility section is a provision which states that somebody in Kiowa Island can't be on sewer. Problem is, we're, the town's actually in violation of that, because- Send the violation to me. This is to add a provision to that sewer requirement, to say, well, if you're going to be required to be on sewer, then a current sewer provider has to agree to pay, that wants to provide utility services in the town of Kiowa Island, has to be willing to provide you utility services.
Where does it say that? That you have to be on sewer?
In our current code. Yeah. Right now, we have, are, under our public utility section, we simply have a section called Use of Sewers Required. Yeah. That hadn't really paid much attention to here before. We're not changing that right now, but we don't want people to be building septic tanks-
Correct.
-on Kiowa Island or in Freshfields Village. And that we also, then, if we're going to require you to be on sewer, then you have to be able to get sewer service.
Right.
So we're trying to line those two up. That's all that we're doing at this point in time. We're adding also a provision requiring an operating agreement, to either have a franchise agreement and/or an operating agreement, because the franchise agreement language under state statute only applies to use of public rights of way, as opposed to simply providing, operating or providing the service in the town. And there may be public health and wealth, public health and safety and welfare issues with regard to providing certain utility services. So that's all we're doing in this particular amendment. There is still a lot of work to be done in putting together a more detailed or robust franchise ordinance and/or draft model franchise agreement that we would then enter into with all our franchise providers. Issues that we would discuss in that context would be things like franchise fees. Generally, most municipalities, correct me wrong, Stephanie, you have familiarity, as does, as does MAC, typically charge anywhere between 3% and 5%. And I think the maximum under state law is 5%. Most utilities will charge 3. If they need more revenues, they charge 5. We may choose not to impose any franchise fee at all, because it's a revenue source for the town, but it's a directly a pass-through to the end customer. And if we determine we don't need the revenues and don't want to impose an additional cost on, on customers, then we may choose, we may have a franchise agreement, but simply not choose to impose a franchise fee. All of that yet to be worked out. This is just kind of the first baby step in this regard. Also, this isn't specifically applicable to this, but again, we've had conversations, recent conversations, conversations with KIU to make them aware that they're operating without a business license or franchise agreement. Same thing with Seabrook Island Utility. We need to work out a broader agreement with Seabrook Island Utility, because I think we've made, had good constructive process, progress in, you know, reaching kind of a spiritual understanding about connecting- spiritual understanding about connecting to Seabrook Island Utility here for the town center and proposed addition. There's a lot that we've got to work through in that regard.
But you're making progress, though, is what you're saying.
Herefore, it was simply no.
Yes, right.
Now, it's, well, there are some complicated issues, and it's going to be more expensive because it's a forced main, but that cost is ultimately on us. It's an engineering issue, and the cost is on us. They've raised an issue with their zero return, so treated effluent that we generate, we've got to disseminate somewhere, whether we do that in the back lawns, in the ponds, it's all treated, or on golf courses, work out some arrangement with the local golf courses. One of those many little issues that has to be worked out.
Okay. I'm glad to hear that. That's great.
Yeah, so I think we're making constructive progress on those things. So anyway, that's the genesis. I'm happy to answer any questions before I entertain a motion for consideration of the proposed changes.
So I have a, it's really a generic question, because you have the new wording for the sewer or wastewater tying in. What would happen if we annexed neighboring properties? Would then, that be part of the town, and the local utility would then have to provide sewer service?
So, absent any change in the ordinance and/or carve-out in a franchise agreement, which has to be approved, would have to be approved by the town, the answer would be yes. My expectation is, it's exactly the kind of conversation, part of the conversation we would want to have, or Seabrook Island Utility, as an example, would insist upon from us, is fine with somebody like in Freshfields Village or here, but if the town were to annex a bunch of stuff around us, no, we don't have the capacity of that, but so, in entering into a franchise agreement with us and agreeing to provide service to you, we would want to make sure that we are exempted from any annexed property unless we specifically agree to provide that. That's...
Oh, okay. Okay.
That's, that's going to be one of those issues, it's kind of part of the complex set of negotiations or discussions. Everything we're going to have to paper up, and they were carrying, characterizing it to us as a, well, we'll send you our developer's agreement, and that's kind of what they're used to, but I said, no, we're not a developer. This is really just to be an intergovernmental agreement, because they are a municipally-owned utility. In contrast, Kiowa on Utility...
And perhaps you don't know, so, how far up Betsy Carrison would one be able to annex land, and they would have to provide service?
I'm not quite sure I understand.
Would Seabrook, how far, is Seabrook annexing land?
No, if we decided to annex across the street, or annex moving up Betsy Carrison.
Well, we can only annex property if the property owner seeks annexation, and then we agree to it.
True, I understand.
And it has to also be contiguous property. So, I mean, I mean, I don't think there's anything that would prohibit if all of Lower Johns Island...
That's, I just was thinking outside the box.
Yeah, okay.
I just was wondering...
I mean, if Kiowa River Estates said, well, we want to be annexed into the town of Kiowa Island, actually, we couldn't do that because it's not contiguous.
Yes.
But if you'd filled in, if there were some contiguity created, then they could apply, and, and I, what's the formula for all those, the 75% property owners?
100%, 75%.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's not 100%, but 75% of those property owners would have to ask, be requested to be annexed.
I just was curious how it works. We don't have to debate it.
Are you suggesting that we are looking to, would look to annex property?
No, I just was trying to understand how it works. Stop stirring the pot.
Good questions, though. Any, any other questions or comments? Do, did we, do we have a motion? Entertain a motion for approval of the ordinance as proposed?
So moved.
Second? Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It is agreed. The next agenda item under Tab 5 is Consideration of the Civic and Cultural Center Edition Design Selection Committee Recommendation to Approve Caplia Co. H3 as the Architect of Record for the Civic and Cultural Edition Project, and to authorize the mayor to negotiate a contract with said firm. I would note that the principal of Caplia Co., Steve Ko, was actually in the audience with us. Just a little bit of background and context, I'd certainly invite my fellow council member, Berner, who has been intimately involved in this, to offer his thoughts and perspectives. Just to kind of recap, the RFQ, issued RFQ in May, was it May? And solicited firms to offer their qualifications to participate in the design competition. We had just about a dozen firms submit their qualifications, very, you know, very pleased with the response at that point in time. It was actually a difficult challenge, whittling it down to three, to participate in the competition. And, and then it was equally difficult to, to figure out whom amongst the three the Design Selection Committee would choose to recommend to the, to the council. We, you know, received submissions, initial submissions, from all three. They did site visits. I had an opportunity to ask questions, get additional information. We held a public presentation of the three submissions. That was well-attended, a lot of comments received on that, but at the end of the day, although I, at least from my perspective, I can't speak for others, it was, it was no disrespect to the person that was selected, it was an incredibly close decision, in my view. I mean, any one of the three firms, I would have been ultimately comfortable with, you know, leading this project, but I, you know, the consensus was, and no disagreement with that, that in key areas that Caplia Co. H3 distinguished themselves. And it was less so with, not so much just the design, because we weren't choosing the design, we were choosing the architect, is that the depth and breadth of their firm and responsiveness and engagement was kind of what persuaded the Design Selection Committee. So anyway, that is what is before us now. I would entertain a motion for approval of the Design Selection Committee, well, actually, any initial comments, Councilmember Spencer.
I just wanted to, well, it was the unanimous decision as well, so even though it was a close call, we unanimously all agreed that they were the number-one candidate. And what particularly struck me about them is they thought outside of the box. We challenged them to think outside the box, and they succeeded in thinking outside the box very, very well, and gave us some good ideas for what we might want to do on this facility, so.
Mr. Berner, can you give a couple examples of that?
Sure. One of the things that they brought up in their design was, they recognized that the front entrance to this existing building doesn't face the street, it kind of faces off in, to the distance. So the, so the design was contemplating having a new entrance to, or main entrance to the building, as well as a separate entrance for the cultural facility. And they were the only ones who did that. They thought outside the box, and it opened our eyes to what they could do.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Any questions of, I'm sure he would be willing to step up to the mic, of Mr. Ko?
I just have two questions. One is, they came in significantly over the guidance for cost. Was there a reason for that? Did they, how could they not come in and meet kind of the cost? Is it sizing, or what was the miss there?
Mr. Ko can, to discuss their thought process, it was a question that was posed very directly to Mr. Ko as kind of part of the overall evaluation process, and noting that, at the end of the day, you know, there's going to be a budget, there's size constraint based on kind of the land we have available, and cost considerations, and he can articulate much better than I can what their thought process was, and what his confidence in their ability to deliver a product that meets design objectives within whatever budget we set.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. First of all, I want to say we're honored to have been selected and look forward to hopefully receiving approval of that. I think the question's a very good question, but at this point, there's a lot of work to be done to roll up sleeves and get to a point where we have a design that meets the budget at a conceptual level. The last thing we wanted to do was to come in and tell you we could build something for what we did not feel comfortable with, given all of the questions and programmatic discussions that we had during the concept. But the hard work, which is no different than any other project, is to work together to come up with a design that does, in fact, meet not only the budget, but meets your program. And so, at an early stage, we do have several contingencies in our cost estimate that helped, I think resulted in one of, some of the reasons that the budget we presented was high, but also knowing the current market conditions, having worked in Charleston for over 30 years, and understanding the construction process, I think that the budget is as important to discuss as any of the other design criteria and program of the building. So, it's no different than having to work out what's the floor plan, we're also going to have to work out what is the actual budget for this project. We recommended a construction approach to the town for bringing in the contractor early, not doing a standard bid of low-bid project, process. We've used this process very successfully on a number of civic and municipal projects, and feel that it will result in getting us to a point where, again, not only the budget, but the program meets all of the needs that the town has.
So, here's my concern, Mr. Mayor, and it's kind of twofold. And having, in my previous engineering life, built several chemical plants, or phases of chemical plants, these guys come in $3.3 million higher than one of the other architects. And so they won something with a design that was 20% more expenditures. What if we'd have told the other architects, everybody spend $15 million? Would we have come to a second, a different choice? Do we have a Cadillac design, because these guys designed a Cadillac, everybody else designed Chevrolets? That's one part of it. Second part is, knowing what the budget was, and they come in and they're 20% over our budget already, and I've done a bunch of projects, other people in the council have done a bunch of projects, the final project will probably come in even higher than this, would be my expectation from here. So, I'm very concerned about both of these things, you know, how they won with a 20% advantage, and then where costs go from here.
Excellent questions. They, as Mr. Ko knows, they are ones that were posed very directly of this process. I can't speak for other council, so, Design Selection Committee members, which included three architects, or two currently licensed architect, one formerly licensed. Couple of observations. One, we weren't really selecting a design per se, this was principally to select a architectural firm, and critical to that was kind of their thought process, to the extent they thought outside the box. What was the depth and breadth of their team? How did they engage and interact with one another? How did they engage and interact with the Design Selection Committee? When I said I scored this personally, very closely, the area where I dinged Caplia Co. was on exactly those issues. So, on that factor, amongst others, I evaluated other firms more directly. Also, other firms, once they presented their conceptual designs and even leading up to that, the question was posed exactly is, well, what would you have done with more? As an example, and I think the, at least in one case, at least a couple of Design Selection Committee members, you know, recalling of what they were saying is, they were quite disappointed in what, you know, what they offered. We offered all committees, say, you know, wow, here's our design parameters. If you want to offer two proposals, then do so. None of them did, and I'm not surprised, and they all did some different concepts, in part because I think there's a lot of work that's involved in all of this. But I, those are excellent questions, and the conversation we had is, you're going to have to fit within a budget, and are you confident you can do so? My view is, their design was a conceptual one, it's going to be that, whatever, if we're sticking with that kind of conceptual design, it's going to have to be scaled down, we're going to have to make some just hard decisions on fit and finish, and some architectural elements and niceties, and the ceiling, and things like that.
So if I, if I may add, so, we had the conversations, and there's two answers to what you just, to what you just said, and it's perfectly on point. So I, I refer you to the first page, the first photograph. He designed has, has a canopy system, a covered walkway. It's $1 million, we're taking that out. His space planning inside also had more space than we wanted to. I think he had something, I think, for, something for food preparation, he had something, he had extra stuff, he had, he had extra stuff in there that we didn't want, and it's going to go towards lowering the overall square footage. And so, your point is well-taken, but there are still, at this point, some big-picture things that we can do to reduce the price.
Yeah, please.
I was not privy to the other firms' costs, or really even their designs, but I've seen in my career many times where firms come in and their prices are low, and the first thing you get hit with is a significant cost increase. Again, I respect the other firms, I know them well, but I don't think that just because our estimate was high, and it is an estimate, it was not confirmed by any contractor or anything really other than just concepts, so.
Yeah, this is, this will be a process, in the design process that will unfold. I certainly would look forward, and I would invite others to be involved in that with the discussions, but, but some of the elements, you know, I was less concerned or wowed by the wow factor element. Some other Design Selection Committee members were, that's kind of what they reacted well to, but I would certainly envision sitting down, okay, we've got to scale back this, we've got to scale back that, what are the trade-off in cost about these additional elements? Do we really need 2,000 square feet of lobby area? We already have a lobby area in an existing building that we're going to connect into. Do we need three primary entrances, or two sufficient? Can we make that work? A whole bunch of issues like that, that I expect that we would work towards.
And there was one other thing that we liked in their concept. The other two, it looked like it was an addition. You had a separate corridor going from the existing facility here to the new cultural facility. This was the only one where it was able to make it look like it was not an addition on the floor plan. It looked like it was always there.
But you weren't picking this design, you were picking, using the design as a concept?
But, yes, but he was able to come up with a way to blend it together such that it didn't look like an addition. So that's, what you're saying is true, but he was able to not make it look like an addition.
And, and, you know, again, it's, every Design Selection Committee was kind of reacting to everything. We had kind of same evaluation factor, but what you weighed more, and this is inherently subjective, but as an example, apart from the canopy or not, the little big meeting area, the community meeting room, does it, does it really need to be bigger than the council chambers? The answer is, in my view, pretty categorically, no. It should be half of what the council chambers are, and we need that much glass specially facing west and things like that, even if we wanted to cite it there. facing west and things like that, even if we wanted to sit it there. I think there, I came away comfortable at the end of the day that there are plenty of opportunities to reduce the footprint and the cost of this, but we'll see.
So one, can, can I speak now?
Yes, absolutely. Sorry. For as long as you would like to, Councilmember Kay.
No, because we're going to take a bio break at the end of these comments.
Okay.
So one of my favorite corporate jobs was hearing pitches, multimillion dollar pitches, and then awarding based on a lot of the criteria you gentlemen have just delineated, and then saying, okay, but I've only got a $7 million project or budget, so scale it back. So I have absolutely no reservations about the budgetary items. My reservations, as we go forward in this process, are going to be about parking, adequate parking, going to be at septic, and it's going to be about the size of the building. The first pitches we heard a couple of years ago for a performing arts center had a large auditorium, and there were a lot of issues surrounding a performing arts center that were concerning, including traffic. So this is, this particular schematic calls for a 250-seat auditorium. That, in my opinion, at this point, it's a very raw opinion, but that seems too big to me. So that's what I want to, and given the issues that we have been talking about with parking, given some of the issues over at West Beach Conference Center that have arisen about parking, some certainly Ocean Pines parking, I want to make sure that if we're going to have an auditorium that seats from 200 to 250 people, where are we going to park them? So that's, those are my concerns at this point.
Great questions, and I'm certainly, when kind of first kind of announcing this idea in January at a town hall meeting, was extraordinarily mindful of all the issues that had been raised with regard to the web management set of recommendations or proposals with regard to what was a standalone, purpose-built performing arts center that they were proposing would be 400 to 500 seats.
And I have been really supportive of this project over the last six months because it converted from a performing arts center into a community center that had multiple uses across a broad swath of the community.
And, and as always the case with almost anything that we do, you're trying to satisfy to lesser and greater extent multiple objectives and be mindful of a range of different things. I've had to deal with a lot of pressure from arts council members and others who believe, and I think they, to a person, they were in force here at the public community meeting, saying that you needed to be at least 400 seats. What I've advised them in each and every instance, we've talked about this over the last several months, is be clear what this is and what it isn't. It is not a performing arts center. It's not intended to be, it's not designed to be. It is a multipurpose facility to be available for use by the community. The auditorium component is intentionally, was intentionally scaled in the 250 to 300 seat to, to solve for approximately two-thirds of the current Kewa Arts Council performing arts programming, but not all of it. A lot of it would still go to the West Beach Conference Center if the West Beach Conference still allows them to, to rent that space. It was also intentionally very mindful of the fact that for every thousand square feet, it's another million bucks. For every additional body seat you add, you have to have additional bathrooms, you know, you have a formula for that. You also have a formula for parking. And so the idea, they said no to larger facility, and it's also intended to be used just for, like, we've had preliminary conversations with Charleston Library Society about having a collaborative program. We're having a Charleston night at the museum, Kewa night at the museum. We've talked to the Gibbs and others about potential programmatic opportunities, potentially our world here. This would be a multi-use facility in addition to the additional meeting rooms. But if you have, I think, and Mark Caymans, to his credit, early on, who did the original kind of very test fittings conceptual planning, you could add, build this facility, and I think the conclusion was you would only need about 70 additional parking spaces. Those could be kind of well-designed and integrated. You can always use the grass areas over here. You put a roll curb in for any spillover parking. That area could actually be expanded if necessary. But it was, it was trying to think about, yes, we want to be on sewer, but also could this size facility, could we fit it within our existing septic capacity if we had to, which we don't want to? So we're trying to think of, through, trying to think through all those issues, whether we have, well, we're not, I don't know.
I have a question for Mr. Warren. When you have all of the airwalls opened up in your main ballroom at West Beach, if you have all the airwalls opened up and you have that one huge conference room, what's the maximum seating of that?
What we'll do is between 450 and 500. What the standards, industry standards say, when you measure them, building standards say that you could do almost 1,000, but we won't because that doesn't allow for a stage, doesn't allow for anything except stairs, chairs and like seating arrangement. So probably 500, and we've had that 400 to 500, and we've done a couple of the arts council.
There have been a couple where I've been even a little over 500, but yes, some right around that range. So this isn't designed to accommodate those types of, we're not building to, this isn't building, being built as a standalone performing arts center designed to handle all range of different performing arts programming.
Okay.
Is your parking, the way you got to park your cars, is that a standard that it's consistent with the parking that you're proposing for every place else and you can, or asset of herbs and all that stuff?
That will be overflow parking. There will be the minimum required parking per code.
I just want to make sure we're all playing on the same field.
Very legitimate, Mr. Warren.
Mr. Mayor, the other thing I was sensitive to, and if my memory serves me, this design was least sensitive or lesser sensitive to than others about preserving the live oaks, the grand trees. And I think they've got one saved, but many of them were taken out. Was that scored in terms of the sensitivity of the grand trees?
Actually, we had discussed in advance, there are no, the live oaks that are proposed to be removed. What would be removed is most, if not all, of this little strand right here. I don't believe any of which are live oaks. They may be, I think they're laurel oaks. In any event, two or three of them are actually, we had a conversation with Arbor Care about this before we even got very far in this project, are either diseased or kind of past life already that would be recommended to come down regardless if you could build around this or not. One of the designs did it keep in place, was built around. It was kind of disconnected from this building. It went a long hallway down that way and then cut over across the area where the picnic benches are, and they would maintain a couple of laurel oaks that, that would be fine. I mean, if you want to maintain a couple of those laurel oaks, these seem to have, most of these seem to have estimated kind of already 40 or 50 years of life, and how much more than that they have is not clear, but, but there were no, none of these proposed to take down any of the grand oaks. In fact, we would try to open up, the concept is to open up some of these areas back here so you could actually see more and take advantage of the grand oaks. That's background discussion. I'm not sure, again, we had a motion just in case we did not, I would entertain a motion for approval of the design selection committee's recommendation.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Co.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Can we, can we recess for five minutes? Back in session. Our next item of business is related to the potential conveyance to the town of a little stretch of Betsy Carison Parkway, part of which is right-of-way owned, if that's the right term, by the state of South Carolina, and the other is right-of-way that I, owned, again, if that's the right term, trying to figure that out, by Charleston County. What we're talking about is roadway from, at the very top of, of the traffic roundabout going into Freshness Village, coming along this property, our property, and running up to the town's boundary line at Resurrection Road. So the idea is to acquire, again, using these terms in quotes, this portion of Betsy Carison Parkway. We've had preliminary conversations with both SC DOT and Charleston County about this. Both seem very open to this for probably some obvious reasons. The reasons why we might want to consider this and why we've been pushing this are several fold. First and foremost is this is kind of our, literally our front porch and our front door leading into the downtown of Kiowa Island. It runs adjacent to the town's municipal center, and again, our current town boundaries go up to Resurrection Road, so this would be even with that. We've had a Dickens of a time getting the state to come out, and Brian has had more dealings, Brian Galtchak has had more dealings with the state maybe else, to do kind of basic maintenance-related issues. There's an ongoing issue right there at Resurrection Road. There's occasion, there's some little potholes that they kind of patched a little bit. that they've kind of patched a little bit on here. We've tried to get them to restripe, to put in turn lanes in and out of this complex. Just can't get them to do it. This is simply not a priority. It's a secondary road. It's defined as a secondary road, which is one reason, about the only reason, they're willing to convey it to us without any cost. It would also give us their better ability, without having to get state and county approval, to do things like if we want to connect to Seabrook Island Utility, their Forest Main, which runs right along Betsy Carison Parkway. To do that, we don't have to get any other approvals with a county or state. We're able to do that ourselves. If we want to put in any bike path going up to, for example, Kia River Estates, to allow, you know, if the resort sometimes wants to build up some employee housing up there, allow them better access along here. And we all, I think, have seen the issues with regard to local residents who transit to Freshfields Village that don't have a car, that are walking or riding a bike in the middle of Betsy Carison Parkway. We can also, if we choose to, we can actually change the speed limit. People are kind of roaring down here. You may realize it's tough to get out of here, in and out of here sometimes, because it doesn't cut down to 35 until just as you get at the median. We could start that up at Resurrection Road without having to get any other approval, as an example. So those are kind of the variety of reasons that we've been exploring this. Had discussions with the state. They've already said yes, at least from a staff perspective, will give you our portion of Betsy Carison Parkway. The other issue about maintenance of all this is it's an orphan stepchild. It's divided. And so therefore, nobody really takes care of it, including the median. So we can just take better care of it from a programmatic standpoint as well as an aesthetic standpoint. The state has said yes. They've got a more streamlined process. What I would propose is seeking the council's authorization to accept conveyance of South Carolina's, the South Carolina DOT's portion of the roadway, subject to a couple of conditions that we can talk about. We've had also a conversation that Mac and one of his colleagues was involved. Four, was it four lawyers from the Charleston County were involved in that, and everybody was kind of scratching their head on some issues. Their process is not the same as the state. They actually don't know, appear to not know whether they actually own the land or not. And so there's a title search ongoing with respect to that. Their process is they would rather have us annex it first, and we're going, but no, we don't want to annex something that is owned by you, and we still have to get your approval on. So that piece of it is, is, will hold for the time being.
Mr. Mayor, say that again. Neither county nor the state knows who owns it. Is that what you said?
They, they, they say they do, but...
They don't have a piece of paper.
A piece of paper. And they were surprised. They were very surprised that we had a TMS associated. We had records in Charleston County that recorded that showed we own the roundabout. We own Kiowa Island Parkway, and we own Beach Walker Drive. That's kind of not their experience. And it's, and at least with respect to the state, it's, you know, Mac, jump in, it's clearly public right-of-way, but, you know, does somebody actually own the underlying dirt, and it's simply a public easement associated with that? The question I posed, and there hasn't been a good answer to, and I think this is what Mac's colleague is looking at, is that's fine with the inbound portion. It used to be just the two-lane road. It's a state road, secondary road. But when the outbound portion of Betsy Carison Parkway was built by the county, the county didn't own all of that land. It was private property. So did they, I mean, what'd they do? Did they buy it, subject to various easements and restrictions, or did they exercise eminent domain? And if they said they did, that should have some ownership record, especially with that, right now?
Yeah. David called me today on the way up here, and it sounds like he has found a couple of deeds going to the county. So he's gathering all that stuff, and will follow up with their lawyers.
So it's been a complicated mess, but that's kind of what, but the timing issue is actually for the state's portion, the staff doesn't anticipate any problem, but it has to go before a state board for approval. They've already given us the documents signed to say, we convey it, and then it would be approved. That has to be submitted, I believe, by close of business today to be on the agenda for the next board meeting. So I've already signed it, but it hasn't been submitted pending this conversation. In any event, it's my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, Brian or Stephanie, that we could still withdraw it. What we've requested from the state is their most recent engineering report or assessment for the roadway. I mean, we can kind of make our own evaluation.
And we should.
And we should. And we've had a couple of proposals. Again, Kimley Horn, or one of them is more expensive than I would like it to be, to evaluate the condition of a quarter-mile of road in the culvert. But the culvert itself is, seems to be a more complicated issue. What we're trying, what we want to find out there is simply, when was it built? And what is the average lifespan? And when was the last state, you know, state inspection done? So we're still trying to get additional information. So the idea is, since contingent approval, to take the conveyance from the state, but we're, you know, that would be contingent upon getting some additional information that we don't have yet. So that's kind of the context. Any questions? So I would entertain a motion to, for, for the council to approve receiving conveyance of the state's portion of the, of Betsy Carison Parkway, which is about less than, less than a third of a mile, right? About a third of a mile. It's the portion that comes, theirs is directly above the roundabout, across the bridge, and then the out, the inbound portion up to Resurrection Road.
Sorry, one more question, Mr. Mayor, or two questions, actually. Would there be any costs involved in the transfer from the state, or would we just take it over?
No. But to be clear, obviously, we're taking on an ongoing maintenance obligation that is not insignificant for time. Sooner rather than later, we would want to repave that quarter-mile.
And that's kind of, takes another, second question is, is there a deferred maintenance cost that we should think about with both the culverts and the paving of the road?
Well, that's, that's exactly what we're trying to get, a little additional information. Great questions. Certainly, if you, we have a sense of what it costs to repave the road. I mean, the number, it's always...
Million a mile.
Thrown out at me as a million a mile, and this is a quarter or third of a mile, although it's double-wide, I guess. And this probably would need to be, we would probably want to repay this sooner than some of our other roads. Beach Walker County Park, I mean, Beach Walker Drive needs to be repaid sooner rather than later. KIP, not necessarily. But there's going to be some maintenance costs associated with this and a couple of near-term projects. The bigger cost-related issue, potential cost-related issue is with respect to the culvert.
Yeah, I guess I'm thinking that, and I don't know how to proceed with this, but there, maybe with the transfer, there's some agreement where we acknowledge there's deferred maintenance on both the culvert and the roadway, and when we make that expenditure, that the state kicks in and the county kicks in some amount to this date, whether it's a 30-year lifespan and it's, 10 years are passed, or 20-year lifespan and 10 years has passed. I don't know how that works, but we should think about that.
I have, good point, have thought about it, hasn't quite figured out how that will work in practice. It's not something that the state has a mechanism to easily address. Because their view is, well, basically, we're spending as little on this as we can for as long as we can. It's a secondary road. It's not a primary road. It's not a principal concern. They haven't been able, it's, I don't think we've been able to do, get them to do the patching at Resurrection Road. They've done a couple little patches here. Again, they haven't been willing to do the striping. They may simply say, nah, no, you know, fine, we'll continue, just don't it, and maybe we'll never get out there again. And then if the culvert collapses, then we'll worry about it. And I'm just not quite sure...
Yeah, I think this is a great idea, but I wouldn't want to, you know, I don't know of a good analogy, but throw the baby out with the bathwater and just say, we're going to take on this expense. It's been deferred for 20 years, without trying at least.
Yeah.
Okay. But I think it's a...
But again, we want, Brian, do you have a, okay?
Actually, so Tim from SC DOT literally just sent me an email with just a little bit of information pertaining to the box culvert. He said it was constructed in the 2005, 2006 time period, around the same time as the roundabout was constructed, and that he's been told that it has a lifespan of about 75 years. So that's not too bad, assuming that it's in decent shape. It's not technically a bridge under the federal DOT standards, so it doesn't get inspected as routine as bridges do. But he said, as a courtesy, he has asked for the inspection to take place so that they can get some information back to us. He should add that back to us in a few days, once the tides cooperate and they can get an inspector out there to take a look at it. Now, the extent of that inspection, I'm not sure, because we've talked to an engineer who's interested in putting on dive suits and going inside the pipe itself and looking around. So I don't know if they're going to do a similar inspection, or if it's going to be more kind of what you can see from, from where you can access. So we'll get some more information from them on that.
No question, we're taking on some maintenance obligation. We're taking on some risk. And the question is, how reasonable is that risk to assume relative to the other potential benefits?
Well, 50 years of additional life for the culvert. How long before?
It's not your concern, right?
I wasn't really talking about my own death. I was talking about sea level rise.
Oh, sea level rise, okay.
But good to know where your head's at.
Well, not going to be my concern. That's 50 years from now. I can talk to that. Any other, did we, I had a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next agenda item. John, you're back up. This is the beachfront overlay zoning district, Town Six. You know, this particular, this is a little bit of context before John gets here. He can go over the details. This has a lot of fingerprints on it, including, you know, Councilmember Farrell's been very involved in this. This is in part kind of a vision that he's articulated. This is related to some of the discussions we'd had at the strategic planning session about putting in place better tools to protect our most critical natural resources in defense against sea level rise and climatic change. We'd already put in place a number of provisions outside the zoning code in the new beach management ordinance that we revised, the repeal and replace the beach management ordinance that we did a couple of months ago. And this is a continuation of that. This was a topic of some discussion at the town hall meeting last Wednesday. I tried to articulate as best I could what I thought the intentions were of the, of the planning commission in making this recommendation to us. I think Councilmember Farrell can perhaps shed additional light on that. I don't remember, Madeline, if you were involved in these kinds of conversations, or they've come up in the context of the resiliency committee. But one thing one should understand is these types of overlay, beachfront overlay zoning districts are pretty standard tools utilized by beachfront communities. I looked at a bunch of them for particularly Florida coastal communities. They all are also up and down communities along Lake Michigan. Any areas that you can get a lot of beach erosion, wave action, you know, impacted by sea level rise or storms. And these are the types of things to ensure that what we've all seen on the news over the last several days in North Carolina isn't what happens to Kiowa down the road. So that you have erosion, and you have storms that inundate, and all of a sudden, you have homes that are really on the beachfront and, and then potentially falling into the ocean at some point in time. They're abandoned, and everybody's just waiting around them to fall in the ocean. We've also got uniquely for us, our beachfront, our dune, and our beach and dune system is critical habitat for bobcats and nesting shorebirds and sea turtles. So, you know, and, and we've got an aesthetic that exists here on Kiowa Island that is unique, and we want to maintain as well. So that's kind of the, a little bit of the background and context, and invite kind of John to describe this, or Councilmember Farrell, or anybody else to offer some initial thoughts.
So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. For better or for worse, this is, as my fingerprints really all over it, as you said, this goes back to the summer of last year, as I rolled off the planning commission and came onto the town council. I left the planning commission with the ask to think about a beachfront overlay, or an island overlay, actually. And as we talked about this, we soon came to realize that one size doesn't fit all, and so we wanted to divide this up. And so there's a particular set of dynamics that happened on the beach that we want to protect. There's another set of dynamics that are different than the beach that are on the river. And there's a third set on the marshland. And so you shouldn't be surprised down the road if you see a river overlay zoning district and a marsh overlay zoning district to follow this. And again, I think that between John and the planning commission, in section 12-81, the beach overlay zoning district, purpose and intent, they did a really nice job of kind of outlining what the purpose of this was. And I know there's a lot of emails back and forth over IQ about what the, what the purpose is. Well, this is the purpose. And when the signs go up, it's indicate that something's happening. It's not to be the explanation. Hopefully, everybody understands they need to reach out to venues like this and the planning commission to better understand. But that's like a notification that you should get involved if you have a view on things like this. It's not a fait accompli. It's the beginning of the process, not the end of the process. But I do want to read just a couple of these statements, and I'll summarize. But the purpose and intent of the beach overlay zoning district is to establish a consistent visual, spatial, and economic, ecological transition buffer zone between the built environment and the ocean and the beach and the dune system. And I could read the other three, and they're going to say basically the same thing. But what, what the vision is, is what's established in terms of construction on the beach today, if you go out there, it's a pretty much a very distinct sightline up and down the beach, and you can see the buffer zone, you can see the dune system, you can see the ocean looking vertically down the beach. And we want to protect that. There are certain parcels of land that jut out, that are privately owned, that jut out all the way to the high water mark. Most of the land is owned by Kika, but some come way out past where Kika owns, and they could form an impediment to kind of a nice visual looking down the beach. So we want to maintain the visual for the community. And secondly, you know, that aesthetic is important both for neighbors and for residents far, far away. But secondly, and maybe even more important, is that ecological transition zone. We talked about bobcats. We've talked about shorebirds. We've talked about turtles. This is a critical habitat that we want to protect for those animals from incursion of construction. And so that's the goal here. It's really to protect the habitat, the visual, and quite frankly, property rights as well. We don't want individuals to be allowed to build something too close to the ocean. And then, again, we've all seen picture of the Outer Banks with a house on stilts with waves breaking underneath the house. That's, and it's incumbent upon us to protect the public and things like that where they might otherwise do something like that. So this is, hopefully, everybody sees this as having a good intent to preserve the aesthetics and the ecological benefits that we get from Kiowa Island. And I'll stop there and turn it to John.
Just one other note. You mentioned kind of the, you know, public input in the process. One thing that's a little bit procedurally different... One thing that's a little bit procedurally different this time, we're not doing the public hearing in conjunction with the first reading. So there's not a public hearing now. There will still be an opportunity for public hearing, either in conjunction with a second reading, or if we deem it necessary, wholly separate from that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, sir.
I know we're not a public period here. I just have one question. Since we all understand that we're one of the only accreting islands along the southeast coast, does the language in there account for a regular measurement of where the zones exist? Because it's possible that if we move forward
With some good years, we would have accretion, and it would bring the zone out more toward the ocean. Do you accommodate that, or you don't want to accommodate that?
There is a provision that was included in the draft language that upon new release of jurisdictional baseline, that the town would evaluate. So we would evaluate whether or not any changes happen.
And the other qualification, because this has come up in context of at least one submission that we've gotten from the public, is it is generally true that Kiowa Island is accreting, and we benefit from that. That is not necessarily consistently true across all of the island, and we get, as you know, our regular, as the resort does, work done by coastal sciences and engineering. And there are portions of our beach which are, over long-term, stable to erosional rather than accreting.
Would you use this as a base analysis for doing renourishment projects to try to ease those areas that are erosional as opposed to accreting, to bring some stability all along those areas?
Well, as you know, we've done beach renourishment projects certainly at the east end, and then I believe the town has actually done some beach renourishment along the west beach areas as well.
More of Eugenia.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. In West Beach, there has, there was a prior, one point in time, renourishment.
Some of the people there did it on their own.
It was the town.
It was the town. They took credit for that, so.
So, I mean, obviously, those are, you know, beach renourishment, in economic standpoint, ecological standpoint, from the wildlife habitat standpoint, critically important, will always look to, you know, we've set aside, you know, how many millions of dollars specifically for beach renourishment, and of course, that's an allowed use of state accommodations tax dollars as well.
And maybe just one, kind of for reference, we did spend a fair amount of time talking about what reference to use, because there's three or four different references on the beach. You can use the high tideline, you can use South Carolina jurisdictional line, which is what we chose. There's three or four. We also talked about having a survey done, and we finally settled on, even though it changes, which was kind of the one negative for the South Carolina jurisdictional line, it changes over a five or 10-year cycle is when they redo it. So it will change marginally, but that's the one we thought, and it's the most public size and the one that's, everybody can find easily. So, yeah, we will, there's a standard, but it will fluctuate slightly.
I wouldn't know. We've also dodged two bullets here in just the past couple, three weeks. First with the two named Storms, the one that shifted directly off sea, as well as the Nor'easter. The Nor'easter, we got extraordinarily lucky, because we were on the outflow wind side of the Nor'easter during the entirety of that event. All the winds were pushing offshore. Notwithstanding that, there was still some erosion on the beach. But if we had been on the nor'easterly side, receiving the nor'easterly winds, we would have been in the same position of Georgetown, South Carolina North, up through the Outer Banks and everybody else, and we could have been well inundated, lost a lot of our dune structure.
Councilmember Farrell outlined the intent of this particular ordinance very well, so I won't dwell on that. I want to begin just the introduction of sort of the key factors of the ordinance, then I'll kind of explain the buffer zones, and then walk through a few particulars in the actual ordinance itself, and give some color to some of the recommendation of the planning commission. So the ordinance would apply to any property within 150 feet of the jurisdictional baseline. And with that, that grabs any property essentially on our oceanfront, except for those that may have a significant deeper lot. One of the things that, in challenging identifying where to start sort of an overlay zoning district, is that we began this process by looking at the existing sort of protections already. What was referenced, that the parcel that the community association owns across majority of a beachfront, that provides already a safeguard for Kiowa. And so utilizing that as sort of a base front, the 150 feet was the ability to look at which properties would be essentially most vulnerable in a set, or opportunity for, to establish a greater protection. So that's where 150 feet is birthed. The ordinance proposes two zones. So these are two buffer zones. These two buffer zones, one is closer to the ocean, which is identified as buffer zone A. This is a 50-foot buffer zone that's measured from the jurisdictional baseline landward. Within that buffer zone A, I'll get to the specifics of that in a moment. The second buffer zone would begin from the edge of buffer zone A, 50 feet landward. So you have a total of 100 feet, 100 feet of buffer area regarding the overlay zoning district. Not every property that is underneath the overlay would have the buffer zones impeded into them, but just know that the buffer zone areas traverse the entire overlay. The other component to this that, that I wanted to share is the actual, there was some discussion regarding seawalls and bulkheads and hard erosion-controlled devices. So this ordinance does prohibit those. If you have been paying attention in more recent time, there's been a lot of other jurisdictions very closely have been struggling to how to navigate erosion-controlled devices on the beach. There's a number of studies that show its disadvantage and regarding the potential impacts that it would have on adjacent neighbors. And so that's one of the recommendations of this ordinance, that it would prohibit seawalls and bulkheads on the oceanfront. So as part of this, I would like to begin by now walking through that buffer zone area. Neil, if you're able to just share. Okay, there we go. So that buffer zone A, which is the pink color, this is that 50-foot area which is most restrictive. So no structures, that would include pools as well, would be permitted in this zone. This is the most restrictive, which is closest to the ocean. As we move landward, buffer zone B, which is in the yellow color, this is 50 feet that's measured from the edge of buffer zone A. This would allow structures, however, there now would be proposed a maximum building height of 10 feet, and that's measured from our base building height elevation. And additionally, there would be a metric for, of 20% not to exceed improved areas. And so the idea behind that is to allow some ability for someone to have a pool, whether we had a nominal size, depending on the amount of square footage within that zone for that particular property. And so that improved area would, it would be anything from structures, paving, whether it's pervious or impervious, they would not be able to exceed 20% of that yellow area if they wanted to put in hypothetically a pool. This does not include any walkover, so this ordinance exempts walkovers. It does not factor into the proposed ordinance. The two other things that I want to mention regarding building height, we've already addressed building height in our base zoning district, but this does also reference the encouragement of varied, of varied heights along the ocean. And so although all of the standards would apply for the base zoning district absent of this beachfront, or with all of the underlying base zoning districts, those standards would apply. We referenced that it's critical to, towards the intent, to include in this ordinance the representation that we still want to show varied heights and reduce massing on the oceanfront. Regarding dune protection and tree preservation landscaping, what you'll see is part of the recommendation in the staff review. Planning commission actually, last week, came back and made some amendments to our tree preservation and landscaping ordinance that reflect what should occur regarding vegetation in the dunes. And so you actually see that next month at your meeting, the recommendations regarding what would be consistent allowing vegetation improvements regarding the beach overlay zoning district. All this points back to that particular ordinance. And then the other two that are, what I think there might be a lot more conversation are, is regarding non-conforming structures. So the intent here is to allow existing structures to be maintained as is. Any new structures would be subject to the, to the proposed ordinance. If there was a proposal for someone to voluntarily destroy their home and start fresh, they would be subject to this new ordinance. However, if it was involuntary, an act of God, they would be able to rebuild back according to what was permitted based on that legally non-conforming structure.
Why would that be controversial?
I wouldn't say controversial, just a lot of, I think, we've received a lot of concern about the possibilities of what happens next, or the uncertainty, I would say, rather.
The issues always with non-conforming structures raise questions, and legitimate questions. You recall, we had to settle a dispute with the timbers to just clarify that they would, in the event of involuntary destruction of that property, be able to rebuild back as they could. There's not much issue at all with regard to grandfathering existing, allowing to rebuild with involuntary destruction if it was, if it was otherwise legally permitted at the time. The question is always, if somebody wants to tear down, do they get to rebuild exactly where the existing structure is? And this is not an issue that's unique to Kiowa Island in any shape, form, or fashion. The general view is, no.
That's why I asked, if it was controversial.
I included in your materials a link to the, this overlay zoning tool that we've been using to help the community kind of see as illustrative purpose of where that buffer zone. And so as was mentioned, area, Eugenia is one of those areas of where the, that buffer zone touches most of, a good amount of where pools are, or even structures are. So that's, when I would say, one of the areas that we've received comments for. That's what I noted, that we receive at least one formal, formal comment today as part of it. Mr. Mayor, that concludes sort of my summary of.
Any questions for John? Thank you for that summary. John, entertain a motion for approval in first reading of the beach overlay ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, the one thing that's still, you know, and I need to go back to the planning commission to talk more about this. I don't remember the logic, other than I feel like it was just standard pulled from the zoning. But in buffer zone B, I'm still not sure whether we want to allow any building in that zone at all, because especially when you say 10 feet building height, that's above base flood elevation. So when you think about kind of, you're at the beach, that's 14 feet above mean high tide, now you're 24 feet above mean high tide. That's pretty high and pretty kind of imposing when you think about just a long stretch of sea oats. So I need to go back to the planning commission about that. I'm not sure that it's appropriate, or maybe it's of the very back edge, the landward edge of the buffer zone. But do you have any comments on that, John?
Yeah, the idea that the, the building height would, would still be, the subject property would be subject to that base zoning, oh, base zoning building heights. And so where an actual structure would be, they would have the existing setbacks. So most of where the overlay occurs, this is actually adding a more restrictive layer. So the existing sightline, if you were to stand on the western end and look down the profile of the beach, 10 foot, you probably wouldn't even notice that difference because of its nominal height across the entire beach profile. So whereas a dramatic difference in something that's 40 feet height, you wouldn't notice standing on one end of the, one end of the beach, looking down that profile, a 10-foot structure.
So I appreciate that. I've gotten a lot of personal feedback about the height of the walkway and boardwalk at, boardwalk 38. And that's just a ramp with a handrail. And that's probably 15 feet above mean high tide, Mr. Burner? Would you guess?
I would, 15.
And so this could be another 10 feet above that. So it's, I just need to talk to the planning commission about that. But that would be the, the only concern I have with this is, if you're thinking about preserving that aesthetic.
Yeah, I think the other
Got a 24-foot something in there.
The other comment that was shared is, I think they were a little hesitant to move in restricting any ability in that, in that 100 feet, and so that's kind of a medium ground, if you will, to allow something to be there.
That would just be the one thing I would raise to the council, is that something we should be sensitive to and think about over the next 30 days, till it comes back to us.
And I shared earlier, a public hearing is scheduled for, in November. We haven't seen, received any, well, outside the one that you've received today, formal letters, but just a lot of calls and questions about. So I anticipate maybe some more comments to be sent in between now and then.
And maybe the last thing, in thinking about this, this might be something that could be done by special exception rather than kind of by right.
That did come up. It did, it did come up as, as a discussion point. And if I recall accurately, it was more of the additional 20%, that was, that came later. So that was sort of a
Mitigating, yeah.
Kind of a mitigating of, of limiting, sort of narrowing down. Instead of adding another process for approval, you can at least have something administratively to move forward with.
Well, and apropos of that, I mean, ultimately, there, you know, potential trade-offs here. You know, what, the 50-foot each, you know, 50-foot designation, buffer A and B, and then what exactly do you allow in A and/or B? Or, and then is that stuff by right or special exception? Maybe it's, if there's enough public input that adjusts those a little bit in a different direction, then maybe it becomes special exception as opposed to by right. Anything else for me? No, sir. You know, there are, I would hope that we receive additional input on this. It's critically important for the island. It certainly has the potential to have an impact on, on some property owners in terms of what they can do if they want to tear down their existing properties and rebuild in these, in these critically sensitive areas. These have been discussed at length in the planning commission, actually, as you note, going back over some period of time. So those are all public meetings. We've, we've talked about this at the town hall meeting with the Kika board member last Wednesday, discussing it here at this meeting. We'll have a public hearing, there will be a second reading at the very least. Hopefully, we'll get some additional input. I do, we did receive one letter, I think everybody's gotten a copy of that. Again, I appreciate the individual concerns, the concerns of individual property owners, and we've got to be mindful of those. I would categorically reject the notion that this is arbitrarily and capriciously being considered. I mean, it's been a very extensive process. You identified all the, the public policy rationales for this. And, and to be clear, you know, people keep talking out terms like, this constitutes a taking. Not, not every zoning standard that impacts property owners constitutes a, either a physical taking or regulatory taking. And whether you rely on the Lucas Supreme Court case or Penn Central, and Penn Central made very clear that the, a property owner doesn't have the unfettered right to maximize the value of their property. So, but nonetheless, these are things that we've, you know, got to take into consideration. I think the, I want to commend Councilmember Farrell and his longstanding work on this at the planning commission. Again, these are for all the reasons outlined by John and Councilmember Farrell, these are, it's critically important that we take a good, hard look at this, and I would entertain a motion for approval of the ordinance on first reading.
Can I ask a question first? So, just a process question. This is the first reading, public hearing, which I would encourage everybody to come to who has any interest in it all. That's November 4th. That's also, I believe, the day of the next town council meeting.
Yes.
So I'm guessing the second reading would not happen until December? Would that be correct?
We could, we often have public hearings in conjunction with first or second reading. We don't have to. We could either have the public hearing in the morning, and, and if they're, depending on ways and means meeting, a separate public hearing, or we could have in conjunction with a council meeting, or we could simply have a public hearing during council meeting and defer second reading.
And when are people going to go vote?
I was going to say, it's election.
Oh, that's right.
Vote for whom? I might suggest, since it's, it's a short three weeks, that we have second reading in December of this. Because if that's done up...
We, we can certainly, you know, look to do that on, on the agenda. Particularly, I had thought about that. You're right, that is, that people will be otherwise occupied that.
I'd rather have more input from the community than not.
Absolutely, absolutely. There's no reason, it, it, critically important. It's great to get the process continued rolling, but there's no reason to rush it to the, to judgment. Entertain a motion for approval on first reading.
So moved. Second?
Any further discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Next agenda item. John, you were still up.
Next agenda item is the proposal of the town creating its own review board for architectural controls. This proposes a new design review board, along with design standards. And the background regarding the nexus of, or genesis of this particular goes back to, I think, several prongs, but the most, most, I think, important is to know that there were efforts between the town and the community association to jointly try to find the next rhythm or phase of what the architectural review board would look like for Kiowa, and it's, and Kiowa meaning the, not necessarily Kiowa proper, the island, but the community itself. Those conversations, or at least progress in that advancement, has stalled. And so the town, in its efforts and its authority, based on state statute, finds it's in best interest to establish its own design review board. With this, the principles that the design review board would be considering are architectural standards that are related to site orientation, building layout, massing and scale, building height, structure heights, penetration, and also environmental stewardship when it comes to process and practice. And so these stages of, of review for specifically a town, it presents the town as simply another board of arm of review, to look at architectural standards. Procedurally, what will, what would be, what has been recommended is that the board, in its form and structure, you'll see in the ordinance how that's been crafted. And I'll kind of direct you kind of to similarly a, a recent process where we went through establishing the tree preservation and landscape board. It's outlining that same sort of format. This would be a quasi-dishable board, as being proposed. And so the functions and powers, they would operate independently as a design review board. The other components to this is actually getting the board up and running to how they would actually review particular projects. That's a key, key component to the recommendation that's before you, is to, that's where design section 20, I'm sorry, not 20...
12-130.
12-130 come into play. So 12-24.2 establishes sort of the framework of the board. 12-130 is actual design standards. And so for staff and, and your review and recommendation of this, the key, key things that I would encourage you guys to have some discussion on is the site, those different, those different elements or standards or guidelines, these are the things that whomever would be appointed to this particular board, this is how they would be evaluating particular projects. And so what's been outlined is sort of a, a guide sheet regarding site orientation and layout, massing and scale, building structure and heights, finstration, which is like windows, doors, and openings, environmental stewardship and processes reference. And what's also been added, based on our introduction from the, the workshop, is signs. And so that location configuration within that, for those proposed signs. I'll pause there, because I think there is this general, I think, understanding of the purpose and intent here. But if there's questions regarding procedurally how to move forward, we can, we can have some discussion there.
And let me just provide a little bit of additional context. I mean, we discussed this previously in other, in other settings. I mean, this, in my view, is necessitated by the fact that the town has a, there is a public interest in the town of Kiowa Island with regard to the, the architectural and aesthetic aspects of, of buildings, fences, and structures, and that those are properly, at least with regard, at least with regard to commercial multifamily provinces, the province of the community, to make judgments with regard to their harmony with architectural, you know, design elements of, on, on Kiowa Island. The issue is, and I, and in saying this, I don't want to impugn in any way the professional qualifications of the existing architectural review board, but the fact of the matter is that that entity is owned, it's part of the developer. And there is no transparency, there is no accountability, and there is an inherent conflict of interest presented by that structure, that going forward, we need to address. So this is designed in part to do that.
And let me just add to that, good people and great intentions notwithstanding, all those things are still, still there.
I, I'm just stating the objective facts about the nature of the structure, not, not outcomes per se. Now, this, what is before the council today is significant, there are significant changes from what was initially proposed by the Planning Commission. One of the elements is with respect to the construct of the design board itself, the composition, and particularly, the, the Planning Commission was recommending the design board members be paid. At least, from my view, that's, that's, that's a non-starter. That's not how it works in other communities. Stephanie's actually on the design board for the city of Charleston, and not compensated pursuant to that. So that was kind of one set of changes. The other was, it was originally set up in kind of a two-phased process, just basically stand up the board, but not have any standards to apply. This, these revisions provide a basic set of standards, as John noted, in 12-130, that as soon as it stood up, the design board can apply. Now, it can adopt its own further rules and guidelines, and I anticipate that it will, but this gives a clear foundation and a basis for the design review board out of the box to have been to apply these standards. I would note that everything in here is basically pulled from two sources, the town of, either Sullivan's I, can't remember, IOP or Sullivan's Island, as well as the city of Charleston. The design standards are largely based on or adapted from those of the city of Charleston. So we didn't reinvent the wheel here. So that's how it's changed from what the Planning Commission recommended. I believe as a result of that, we can approve it on first reading, but it still needs to go back to the Planning Commission, given that there's substantial departure, material departure from what, so they haven't considered this version. And they would need to do so, since it's a zoning change. Now, any questions for me or John? And then we can, or, questions are fine, or we can go to motion, and then...
We have a public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. My...
I almost forgot to forget.
Okay. With that back down in context, I would entertain a motion to go into public hearing.
I move we go into public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any members in the public that would like to comment? Ms. McElvein?
Maura McElvein, 146 Blue Heron Pond Road. I have a couple typos. Actually, I have a number of typos, which I can handle with John. I needn't go through all that with you. I have a couple questions, though, and one is about the formulation of this particular body. If you look at page two of three, in the middle of the page, F1, it says, "The DRB shall review and render decisions on proposed non-single-family residential developments." Now, to me, that could mean multifamily residential developments. It could mean commercial, or it could mean both. So I find that a little vague. And the reason I find it vague is you then, in your...
Sorry, Maura, which, which provision were you pointing?
I'm in page two of three.
There's multiple two oh threes.
Three.
F3, okay.
In the first, first phrase, "On proposed non-single-family residential developments." If you look then at your design standards, you describe it slightly differently. In 12-132, you say, "The provisions of this article apply to all real estate within the municipal limits of the town of Kiowa Island excluding single-family residential, except single-family residential which is not subject to review or purview by any established architectural review board," or architectural, yeah. I would include the same incantation language, and I would actually just say, unless it's currently covered by another ARB, it's in our area, commercial or multifamily. And, and I would make it broader, because I find it a little confusing, your description. But I do think, at a minimum, it should be the same description. Secondly, on the composition of the board, and this, I would have, I could stand up again at tab nine and talk about the Planning Commission, the BZA, and the Landscape Commission. But you make it very clear that some number of the total number of members has to be a resident member. In the other tabs, planning, BZA, and landscape, you make it clear that those people who are resident members are defined as a person who permanent, resides permanently within the town of Kiowa Island municipal boundaries. Those are in the other tabs, in tab nine, for planning, BZA, and, and landscape, but not in this. I don't know if that's deliberate or inadvertent. But to the extent you're going to include the municipal boundaries, that's kind of where I have a little tension with all four of these proposals. I understand that Seafields is in the municipal boundaries of Kiowa. So you could have three of the five members of this committee living in Seafields. Now, some of the people living in Seafields aren't even going to be able to get on Kiowa Island currently, as I understand the Kika regulations and the discussions. So I have concerns that three of the five members could not even have connection to Kiowa Island, or have little connection to Kiowa Island. So I'd like you to think about why it has to be that many people, permanent residents, including Seafields. Or including even, there is residential in Freshfields. I don't think it's very well occupied, but there are residential units in, in Freshfields as well. And I'm not quite sure why, as many as three members from outside the gate could be opining on inside-the-gate issues. As I say, I will go over my typos with John. The last thing, and again, this also is in the planning, landscape, and BZA issue. On the last page of 12-24.2, page three of three, it is the last sentence of L. "Such appeal shall be filed within 30 calendar days after the decision of the DRB is rendered." Rendered is a word that's also used in the BZA and in the Planning Commission. It is not in the definitional section, in 12-374, or in the more general definitional section of 1-102. I recently looked at this and determined that the way the town interprets rendered is a written notice is sent out. The date the written notice is sent out is treated by the town as the day it's rendered. Even if, for example, at the BZA, the BZA announces its decision on the date of the hearing. I don't know why that's not the day it was rendered. I don't know why the writing is the day it's rendered. But what I would ask you to do is just define it. Put it somewhere in your ordinances, so it's clearer what it means. That's all I have on this tab. Thank you.
Thank you, Maura. Just a, a couple of reactions, points, I think, well-taken with regard to the need to be consistent in how we talk about, apply the language. And this issue with regard to what, when does some, is something rendered, has come up in other contexts, and we should take a fresh look at that to make sure that, kind of, we understand what we want that to be, and it's consistent against all the others. The one area I would just, for the record, push back on, and push back very strongly, is the notion that there needs to be some, that there needs to be a distinction behind the gate or not. That's just, it, it, my view, completely irrelevant to this. I would also note that this applies to commercial and multifamily, and there's more commercial in Seafields, or as much commercial in Seafields as...
Freshfields.
Freshfields, as there is probably on the, on the island proper. This distinction between the island and behind the gate and the rest of the town, I just, I don't accept that. But in any event, these are members that are going to be appointed by a mayor and approved by the town council. And if a future mayor and a future town council would decide, for whatever reason, that the three best members of the, of the commission all happened, should be all those who are resident in Seafields, so be it. I would be surprised if that ever happened. But there is a process for applying for this, and I don't want, think you want to bind the hands unduly of, of the, of a future mayor or council. And I don't want this artificial distinction as to who lives behind a gate and, and not. That's just my own view on that.
I would, I would second that, Mr. Mayor. And I, I kind of, the way I try to think about this is turn the coin over. How would a qualified architect who lived in Seafields feel if he were exempted from being able to be on the architectural review board for the town of Kiowa? That doesn't sound right to me either, so.
In particularly, if there was a proposed major commercial project over next to Ansel Lynn on that undeveloped lot, or right across the street on the undeveloped lot, so.
Yeah.
Mr. Warren?
Thank you. As a simple question, we went, we went through the same thing when you redid the people we had to go through for trees. The landscape committee, whatever it is, you know.
Tree preservation board.
The people who had to approve whether or not you could take a tree down or not to build something. And we used to go to the ARB. When initially came out, we were told we, we still had to go to the ARB, and then we also had to go to the tree preservation board. Now I understand that we don't go to the ARB, we just go to the tree preservation board. Am I correct in that?
Well, you'd have to ask the ARB as to whether or not they would require you, as a matter of private covenants, to go to them. That's a matter of interpretation of the private covenants. Regardless of the answer of that, if there is a more, if there is a more restrictive town provision, you would have to comply with that. You would have to go to the...
So the same thing will continue to be true with ARB approval of site plans and designs and so forth? That you're now saying that town is going to take, are going to have their own ARB to do that?
That, that, that is, that is correct, sir.
If you were in my place, would you appreciate that?
Not at all.
Not at all? But you're going to do it anyway?
Yes.
Okay, I just want you to say that.
I'll say it. I don't want him to say it, but I'll say it.
So, so one thing, as a, as a significant property owner, that one, if you don't like doing both, another alternative is to amend the general covenants, or the Kika covenants, to no longer have to comply with the ARB standards. So there's another alternative path that one could explore.
Very good debate response.
Fifty, fifty percent of all property owners can agree to amend the general covenants, so.
Sure.
Okay.
I would vote with you, too.
The other, I'm so tired. I hope you are, too. We get to this, we, we've gotten to this point because you... We get to this, we've gotten to this point because you made a statement opening up about all of the objective things that were wrong, and that's what...
I didn't say they were wrong, I just said make objective statements about the current status, about the status quo.
You made, that's right, you made objective statements that, okay, I'll go along with that, I'm not going to argue that. So, at this point, then, can you point to me what the process as it exists today, what the problems have been created by the process that we have that are so egregious we have to change? In other words, what's the ARB done so poorly that it's, you feel that the town has to fill in the gap and make it better by doing your own ARB? So what can you point to something where it hasn't worked?
So, others can answer this however they want to. I can certainly express my own judgments, those are subjective, about the ARB's approval of certain commercial and multifamily and residential projects, and I could point over there, I could point over there, but...
That you just don't like the way they look?
I just, I could make my own judgments about whether I think that they are consistent with the neighborhood compatibility standards, whether the massing is appropriate. I'm not an architect, I could have my own subjective judgments. What I focused on, at the outset, very intentionally, was the issue that, right now, with Architectural Control on Kiowa Island, including those things which substantially impact the community as a whole, including commercial development in Seafields, there is no transparency, there is no accountability, and there is an inherent conflict of interest. None of those things, when you're talking about review of major commercial and residential projects, in my view, is a good thing.
Okay. You understand that other people may disagree with you. Thank you.
God bless. Other?
I am so...
I'm sorry, excuse me, you're still in public hearing, would you like to close?
Oh, I'm sorry, we are still in public hearing. Any other members of the public commenting? If not, I would entertain a motion to return to regular order.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Entertain a motion for approval of the ordinance as proposed on first reading.
So moved.
Second.
There's a second discussion.
Okay, I am ambivalent about this, this proposed ordinance. And I would like more time with a clearer head to discuss it with you. At this point, I think it's too big an issue for me to just be comfortable voting on it today.
I'm in the same camp. I'm pretty tired. And I also am ambivalent, which means I can go either way. But my brain, my brain is fried.
I just want some additional discussion around it.
I'm also tired, but I probably have a slightly stronger passion to talk more about this and to dig into this more. I hate regulation that corrects the past ill, but I think this is one that does correct several past ills, and I would say that specifically in regard to commercial or multifamily residential. And that's what we're addressing here. It's not a single-family issue. It's not an island-wide issue. I think the Architectural Review Board, as it has been implemented over the past twenty years, has done a spectacular job. I'll use the word spectacular. I've had some direct experience with them, and they've always been highly responsive and very professional, but I look at the gaps that have happened over the recent years and the community outcry about the sizing, the massing, the screening, all of those things, and I, I question whether there's been either the attention to detail or the fact that they worked for the developer. And I hate to say that out loud, but I don't know. So the transparency, as you said, has not been there, which would have been great to answer a lot of the community questions, and it's, it just never came on a lot of different fronts. And so I think the intention here is good, although I'm sorry the way it's, the way it's come here, but I'd like to continue discussing this, and maybe today's not today, maybe we take this up at a further timeframe like the other one, but I, I'd like to continue talking about this.
Yeah, I want to talk about it, too. It's, I need, I need to absorb it and think about it some more. It would be, in my mind, like Madeline says, I think, I'm not ready to vote yet, is what I'm really saying.
Well, again, this is just first reading, so it's...
I know, we, we went down that discussion on other issues, it's just the first reading, but then all of a sudden you get to the second reading. So I don't want to, I'm not falling into that trap again.
Well, okay. No issues discussing this further, but, you know, does that mean for another defer and have first reading at the next council meeting, and then second reading there, or do you, is the desire to have a workshop on this particular issue? It's got to go back to the Planning Commission, in any event, they may have different views. I'm not quite sure what you mean, I'd, I'd like to deliberate on it, I mean, we had all the materials, and I didn't have time to understand. If we want more time...
I would like to sit down and talk with you and others...
We can't do that collectively...
I understand that.
Unless it's a workshop, that's what I'm trying to...
One-on-one. I understand that.
Okay.
That's, I would like to talk...
So, yeah, so, Mr. Mayor, why don't we do, like we did previously, why don't we schedule a workshop? And so we can all sit down, all five of us, and talk about this, and then if we get to the second reading, I think we approve this, we do the workshop, and if we get to the second reading, and we're still in a couple, we can table it at that point.
Yeah.
And do another workshop.
There are some reasons to go ahead and, I think, approve this on first reading, it kind of triggers pending ordinance, and then we can make sure we will all agree that before we have put this on the agenda for second reading, we will have a workshop, a public workshop, and then I'm happy to spend as much time individually with any council members and/or with John and Stephanie to work through any of the other issues or questions.
We went down that road on first, it's, with the argument, I think, by you saying, oh, it's just the first reading, we can amend it later on, and that blew up. I really don't want to do...
What do you mean it blew up?
I mean, it became a big problem because you were ready to proceed with the second reading approval, even though the discussion was, approve it on the first reading, we'll make changes later on...
Which is what we've done on almost every one of...
There was pressure, there was pressure to approve it.
On which one?
I think it was, I think it was the one with the sports court that we just went through. But I'm not ready to vote on it. I understand what you're saying with respect to first reading...
Remember, we had a, because of the request, we had a public workshop.
I understand that. I not, I really don't want to vote on it today. I want to absorb it, I want to talk with you, I want to talk to the other people on the council. But that's me, so it's, you can get four other votes...
Do we have a motion?
Yes, there is a motion.
I'll just say that I may be more comfortable with this, because I remember the process for the Landscape Tree Preservation Board, which is very similar to, and the deliberations went to that...
Briven by some of the same considerations.
Exactly, there's a lot of similarities in how it's constructed, so I respect that others need some time to get more familiar with it, especially later in the afternoon like this. But I personally am very comfortable with this.
Yeah, I think the, again, I'll repeat what I said before, I think the appropriate course, and I feel very much like the other members do, is we do need to have a workshop, and we don't take this up in November, we, at the earliest, we take it up in December for the second reading. And even then, we can still table it if people are not comfortable, but...
Okay. We have a pending motion to approve this on first reading. We will schedule, if it is approved on first reading, we will schedule a public workshop, and, and if we need more than one public workshop, we can certainly do that, so every council member can ask whatever questions, and I'm happy, of course, to spend as much time one-on-one with anybody and, you know, do that with staff as well.
Everybody, all right, in session?
Yeah, okay. Yeah, okay.
Maybe do it, since we're doing something on the fourth, do it that week, so we can kind of block it all into that week.
Good. So we have a pending motion to approve the ordinance on first reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Okay. The motion is approved, four ayes and one nay. But we will still have a public workshop before we consider second reading. Next agenda item, John, are you, you're still up?
Next agenda item is first reading, public hearing as well. This is regarding supplemental regulations, Section 12-128, access parking and loading regulations, looking to modify minimum parking standards. This addresses our Table F primarily, which is our off-street minimum parking requirements, and there are two parking design standards, which are minimum standards regarding parking. I highlight what are the recommendations of the Planning Commission, and then what you see before you regarding some changes within that table. Primary discussion regarding, it started with single-family residential, and within our categories of residential development, you'll see that there is a parking requirement per dwelling unit. Previously in our code, there was some confusion and some inconsistencies on how that metric was, was outlined, whether it be a per bedroom or per dwelling unit calculation, and so what's being proposed is to kind of have a consistent per dwelling unit approach. Planning Commission did have a great discussion and debate on a modified version of looking at a per bedroom dwelling count. However, the, what's before you is looking at a number of spaces per the actual dwelling unit. So that new category, as you see under multifamily, is where most of the substance changes have occurred, where there's now in a studio, one bedroom, at 1.5 spaces per unit. Anything over two bedrooms would be two spaces per unit. And then additionally, there is a guest parking requirement associated with one space for every four units. So this would be an automatic built-in guest parking calculation based on the total number of units for a proposed development. The other additions you see regarding guest spaces for single-family residential developments, under duplexes, there's a plus-one guest space per unit, and under townhomes, there's a plus 1.5 guest spaces per unit. And just that the thought pattern there is that there is a slight difference in the approach of, the application of those two types of residential developments compared to what that is of multifamily. Secondly, devote your attention to accommodations regarding hotels and guest rooms. So the requirement that's in the code today is based on maximum occupancy. That recommendation is now being looked to modify to gross floor area, and the changes as far as the actual metric and standard, opposed to 1.25 spaces per room, that's now one space per room. And then the, that's a reduction in the hotel minimum regarding actual room numbers. Wherever regarding conference area and associated uses, there's a standard of, for conference area that are inclusive of part of a hotel structure, that's one space per 300 square feet of gross floor area. And additionally, any associated uses would be, to be 75% opposed to 50%, what's in the current code. That 75% parking requirement is inclusive of, if there's a hotel that includes restaurants, bar, offices, retail, or any of those associated types of uses. So when you aggregate all the associated uses for hotels, that's how that parking calculation would occur. What's also being recommended is to add an employee designation, so the employee calculation is one space per employee of the largest shift. So plan site, plan review, the applicant would need to designate what they intend the largest shift to be for that development. The only other change in that table regarding the metric is the reduction of the parking requirements for a conference center, convention center, for one per four space, for, excuse me, one per, instead of one per four, based on the maximum occupancies, a one per 300 square feet gross floor area. The 300 square foot, that's pretty consistent for most jurisdictions adjacent, and a pretty common-use metric for assembly spaces. Regarding the parking design standards, you'll see in subsection D, the substantive change that you see here is regarding off-site parking. So it's in our current code, parking requirements should be located on the same site of what's being proposed. There have been a number of instances where shared parking plans, recommended and approved, suggest that off-site parking be utilized, particularly when we think about the application of employee parking or recreational uses, where it's not a, a one-person or consistent rhythm of a person using a parking space that entire afternoon or day. This allows some flexibility to be able to allow development to have off-site parking. As you all know, through beach walker projects, there's now, we, off-site parking for the Cape. And so what this allows is to have a, at least a minimum standard that would require, not require, but allow for off-street parking specifically just for employees' resort and recreational uses, and all the other particular metrics regarding residential would still need to be required on that same site. This just allows the opportunity for adjacent parcels, and there's a few metrics here that have to be met in order for that to occur. And if those metrics are not met, if at least one of those is not met, it would be subject to the Board of Zoning Appeals. And so one, being a parking plan that addresses the minimum number of street parking. Two, a maximum of only 30% of that require parking may be off-site, so it's a factor of not all of the potential spaces can be decided off-site, but only 30%. Then, three, required spaces for persons with disabilities, those shall not be located off-site. Shared parking or off-street parking is, must be located in sort of a relatively close distance, what's being recommended is 500 feet from the primary entrance. That allows a sort of a safe walking distance from where that parking would occur, or there have been identified at least a metric for shuttle service to be provided. We would require that there be connected continuous network of sidewalks from that parking area to the proposed uses, and then if there is a separate parcel being utilized, then a formal written agreement must be submitted as part of that parking plan that shows, from the record of property owner. And all this needs to be satisfied based on a certificate, certificate of occupancy. Those are the substantive changes, like I said, these have come subsequent to the workshop, and so, I don't know, Mr. Mayor, you want to add anything based on conversations?
Well, just to reset, I think everybody's understand, probably understands the genesis of this and why the Planning Commission took up the changes to 12-128. It was to address clear inadequacies in our current code with regard to the... It was to address clear inadequacies in our current code with regard to the amount of parking required with certain types of residential and commercial multifamily projects. And it was less so with regard to the minimum requirement for the residential uses. It was that our code didn't actually require, certainly for multifamily developments, any parking for visitors or guests. And we've seen that reflected in a number of different developments. We've learned that there was adequate parking, the minimum required number of parking spaces built at the Timbers for the property owners there, but none for, or not nearly, not nearly enough for staff, the property managers there.
Services.
Employees and visitors and guests. When the Cape was first proposed, not only was it not onsite, but they had proposed a total of 30 parking spaces that were going to be all of the parking spaces for visitors, guests, employees, club users, and visitors and guests of Ocean Pines, which clearly would have been insufficient. What we'd seen in the proposal with regard to Upper Beach Walker, 62 dwelling units, but only a minimum number required for the residential uses, but only enough for, only five parking spaces for all visitors and guests, vendors and service providers, clearly inadequate. We've seen commercial development more recently on sea fields where there is, turns out, there's not really adequate parking for visitors and guests. There's enough for residents, but not visitors and guests. So that was kind of the genesis of this and dwells to clean up some other stuff. The other thing that John noted, which is a little bit new, is well-intended kind of shared parking concept that was agreed to in conjunction with development with regard to the resort, to the West Beach Conference Center, Cougar Clubhouse, and the West Beach Hotel, what was intended to be built at the time, the West Beach Hotel. And I think there's some kind of intuitive or conceptual benefit to this shared parking concept. The problem is, it wasn't a concept that was consistent with our current zoning code. So it's, we're trying to embed that concept now in the zoning code. So that's kind of the genesis or basis for all of this, whether the calculations are, you know, the ones that everybody agrees with in each and every instance. You know, we can certainly talk about that. The planning commission did talk about that at some length. There were some adjustments made in this from what the planning commission recommended. We can certainly talk about those. One issue, for example, that has come up with regard to assembly areas, like a conference, our current code measured the minimum required number of vehicles based on maximum occupancy limits. The problem is, that's not really calculated until after the fact. So you don't really know, and that depends on the uses, and it was hard to figure that out in terms of how, the number you would require to be built. So what is included here is a one space per 300 square feet, which John noticed is more of an industry standard rather than based on maximum occupancy limit. But with that, this background and context, or if not other questions, then I would entertain a motion to go into public hearing.
I guess I have a question.
Okay.
Or maybe it's after the vote. I'm not sure. But I see this as an opportunity here, though, particularly for the large parking areas that you would have at the hotel, to incorporate into this pervious materials. Make it a requirement in here for the larger parking requirements, definitely at the hotels, perhaps golf courses and such. But the last page of this document says, under PAGRA H1, that pervious materials may be allowed as approved by the planning director, and that's for non-single-family homes. I think this is an opportunity to require it for the commercial parking.
John, any thoughts? Is that best addressed here or elsewhere where we're looking at, you know, the application of stormwater management practices?
Yeah, there was a previous proposal considered requirement for pervious parking that didn't move forward. And so, once that went back to the planning commission, planning commission's recommendation is to look at it a little bit more holistically and approach with stormwater management. So as part of our Phase Two of looking at more specific designs or stormwater standards for Kiowa, pervious would be one of the options for a property owner to choose in order to solve or address for any future runoff issues.
No, I'm sorry. I'm sorry to interrupt. I didn't want you to go down the wrong rabbit hole. I'm not referring to private residences, I'm referring to commercial with large parking requirements.
No, I'm saying that, we discussed that previously and it didn't, so if council has that appetite to move that forward, staff would support that.
I have that appetite.
We just didn't have the support previously.
So do I.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
We all, four of us all agree.
We all have the appetite.
To go after, to include a requirement for pervious services.
So, I mean, we can pull back similar language that was recommended previously and for second reading, have that incorporated.
And there, and at least I understand there's a design issue, which came up with turning radiuses and certain driveways, I guess I'd say, that requires a tougher surface like asphalt or concrete.
Yeah.
The spots themselves.
Yeah.
So whatever, if we could go back to that language and accommodate more pervious, that would be great.
Well, we're not at that juncture quite yet, so before that, we need to go into public hearing, entertain a motion to go into public hearing.
Salute.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're into public hearing. Mr. Warren.
I'm Roger Warren. I'm president of the resort. My ass is going to be hard for me.
Go ahead.
This is ridiculous. I'm just going to say that, that's what I feel. It feels like you're trying to fix your Easter parking problem. You don't have, I don't, we don't have a parking problem with the resort spaces. You had made, we were having a conversation, made a comment, Mr. Mayor, about the number of spaces at West Beach, without even completing the hotel down there. We currently have 500 parking spaces available in West Beach for the golf course, for the meeting hall, conference center, for the pool. And 115 of those are pervious, they're gravel on a lot that's not developed yet. Get into the pervious, that would be nice, but it's, unless you can show me that it meets the standards that we have come to expect on Kiowa in terms of quality, it would be difficult to try to do that. And there are service issues with the trucks that come in, the service trucks. So I'm not sure that that's a good idea, but we would look at it. But I don't understand who came up with the idea that we have a parking problem at the resort. I keep hearing these comments, we got parking problems all over the island, we got parking problems. So I'd like to know what survey was done, on what frequency? Give me some data that talks about where these parking problems are. And I'm certainly going to work to solve the resort ones, but you would understand when I say, if we had a parking problem, I would know it. Because we, it's our guests who would be having complaints about not being able to park. Now, there are days and times when every parking space is full. That's true. And it's usually on some kind of event, but it's not regular. In terms of getting into this now and changing the standards of how many cars you have to have for a room night or a conference and so forth, you mentioned, John, in regards to what the standard was for, you know, industry standards, whatever. I'd just like to know who your source was. Because we do the same thing. When we plan those buildings, we're going out there trying to maximize the service level and parking that we need for those buildings. I just find it confusing, frankly, that now all of a sudden, we've got a parking problem and you've identified a solution before you even, we've had one conversation about parking. I understand the parking issues at the Cape, I understand the parking issues down at the other place.
Marsh House.
Marsh House, Timbers, all those. I don't care. Excuse me. I don't care about their parking problems. But I also don't want to be measured now because you got a problem with them, we ought to mess with my parking standards, with my parking places. Hell, we've been here 20 years at this hotel. We know what the performance is there with parking. Yes, we do have some days that are full, but they aren't more than four or five a year. And maybe Easter is one of them, and we try to solve that. I want to support your efforts as a, running a major business on this island, I want to make sure that we are contributing to the success of what we're doing. But I want to make sure that when we do it, we have some kind of standard and some kind of expertise. And if you've got a parking expert on the planning commission, I'd like to know who it is, I'd like to give them my office, and I like to go around every parking place and look at the standards by which we build those, the numbers that we did, what that standard was, and have a discussion before we're faced with dealing with a resolution or a new ordinance coming up to try to solve a problem that maybe you're wrong, it isn't a problem.
So can I pose a question to you?
Sure.
What, what change or proposal in here, which element of this gives the resort heartburn and for what reason?
Well, if you've got some time, we can sit down and go over item by item. I'm not going to do it right now because I'm, like you, tired. I went through and looked at every one of those things that were read that related to the resort. I don't know where they came from. I don't know what the process was to change what we've got to go to what you're changing to. I don't know how that was arrived at. I don't know the science, I don't know the evaluation.
So I can address one of those very specifically, which is, and I already touched upon this, which is the calculation for the assembly facility or conference hall under the current ordinance. So if we don't do anything with regard to the conference center provision, it requires one parking space for every four persons of maximum occupancy. Now, we got from a building official, I can't remember, they originally said 2,500, but I believe it is actually about half of that. Your stated occupancy, maximum occupancy, I think you said it was 1,000 just for the ballroom itself.
No, that, that was a number that was put on the website. Yeah, there are no maximum numbers on any of the rooms in the building.
Well.
Nobody ever did that. The fire marshal wouldn't do it.
Well, okay, that's a separation. The bottom line is, what the current code required, there is a formula under the building code, which our building official has now applied, I believe Daniel went through this, as just an example. And in our current code, it requires one parking space for every four persons of maximum occupancy. That was somewhat over 1,000 for maximum occupancy for the facility that didn't include employees. So just under the current code, that would require more than 250 parking spaces for the conference center itself. Right now, there are 130. There are 70-some underneath and 60 outside.
They're not at 130.
No, Roger.
No, we're not.
Roger, there are, we've reviewed the plans, there are 60 or 70 underneath the building, there are another 60 or so in the parking lot behind that. There are, in addition to the areas for the pool and the check-in facility, which are separate uses, there are a total of 200 parking spaces in all of those four combined. But is, all I'm saying is, the current standard simply required 250. Wasn't a attempt to change the standard?
Current standard?
That's current.
Wasn't in our development agreement?
There is no, there is no parking reference in the development agreement. So then you fall back on the town's ordinance. That was the exact same issue with regard to the partners' development agreement.
If you could let, you raised an issue, let me go back on how we addressed that issue. We knew that 60 to 65% of the people who were coming from the resort to the conference center came on a bus, came on our buses, our internal buses. So that reduced the number of parking spaces that was required in the process because we didn't need parking spaces for those people. We also said that we have another 115 gravel parking spaces, we have the parking spaces that go down toward the beach. We've always known that we were going to have to have parking that was shared parking between the golf course, the hotel, and the conference center, because a lot of the same people were staying either in the hotel, were playing golf, were going to the conference center. They were the same people, were going to the restaurant, they were the same people. So you didn't need to account for them individually every place they parked.
So I earlier agreed that that was what was done, and I said that made conceptual sense. The problem was, that wasn't a concept that was allowed in our existing ordinance. So we're embedding that concept to benefit the resort in this because we're allowing the shared parking spaces concept, that's what John discussed in this. Roger, I truly, I don't believe that any of this is going to significantly impact the amount of parking associated with the resort uses. That depends solely on the amount of ancillary associated uses associated with the hotel. That's the issue with regard to the sanctuary. The parking needed there is not just for, obviously, the guest, it's for...
You're saying that we need parking at the sanctuary?
No, what I'm saying is, parking at the sanctuary, you need parking not just for the guests that are staying there, you need to have parking for the chapel, for the conference, the ballroom, for ocean, the ocean room, for jasmine porch, for the bar, the salon, you know, all of that. And so that requires more parking than just associated with the hotel. I'm not, I'm not evaluated whether there is the adequate number of parking spaces at the sanctuary. But this isn't intended to address the resorts' issues, this is intended to give, the changes here give, provide flexibility that doesn't exist in our current ordinance, to address the shared parking concept. It does not exist in our current ordinance. So we're trying to embed what was done before.
You promise?
That's what the, the whole concept of the new four, number four that John went over, was to embed in this ordinance the kind of arrangement that was worked out, however laudable and well-intended it was, it simply wasn't consistent with our current ordinance. So if it was a good idea, let's just make sure that it can be incorporated in our current ordinance.
I got nothing else to say. You win. I'm too tired to argue.
Most of the, most of these changes are trying to address the issues with the relative lack of parking for visitors and guests primarily at multifamily developments. Because the single-family, a single-family property owner, they're going to build, you know, their two or three-car garage every month they want, they want to have their little court so they can have parking for their guests, they usually have a driveway. The issue is almost always with multifamily units, because in many cases, what we've learned is the property owner would rather not devote valuable property to surface parking for visitors and guests if nobody forces them to do so, and they'll say, we'll solve that problem later, which we've been trying to do with places like the Timbers and the Cape and other developments as well. That's primarily what this is designed to do.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Always a pleasure. Any other public comments? Entertain a motion to return to regular order?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We're back in regular business. Entertain a motion to approve on first reading, the changes to the parking regulations in 12-128.
So moved.
Is there a second? Oh, he moved and it was, oh, okay, second. Now, further, further discussion.
So is John still here? So, yeah, just a quick question. For single-family detached, two spaces for a dwelling unit.
For single-family detached, two spaces for a dwelling unit. If I have parking under the house, is that counted, like my garages, or is it?
That would be your two spaces. Anything else would be sort of extra.
Okay. And then, how do you think about the pad outside of my garage where I have to turn around? Is that counted as anything?
Yeah, so if you wanted to...
You can add as many as you want.
You can park as many cars in that area. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be addressing whatever the minimum requirement, if that makes sense.
And then what about if I have separate guest parking? That's just on top of all of that.
Yeah, so there isn't a, a minimum requirement for a single-family detached for guest parking.
Okay. So just informationally, since I've been through this, Jen, you have to close your ears for this. So the ARB requirement is the parking underneath my house doesn't count. The pad outside that I can park...
Count for what?
For parking.
Okay.
For guest parking. The pad outside that holds four cars, because I have a three-car garage, doesn't count. And I have to have two guest parking spaces in addition to all that. So for me, that was a impervious issue as well as a lot coverage. So there's, I don't know whether it's inconsistencies or it was just overdone. And I know there's some broad parking issues at other rental properties, and I had rented my property. But for residential construction, I can now park three, seven, eight, nine, 10, I can park 10 cars and they're not in my driveway proper.
And, and...
And that was all required.
Not required by ordinance.
Between the town and ARB.
No, not required by the town at all. Not required by the town at all.
Well, two, two were, but that's under the house.
Two, but those are, the covered, enclosed or covered. That's all, the, the operating assumption, and was discussed in Planning Commission, then John and I discussed this, is single-family property owners will build, if they want to build a two-car garage, or a three-car garage, or four-car garage, as long as they meet other, you know, maximum lot coverage issues, that's up to them. If they want to have a four-court, you know, you know, outside four-car parking court, that's up to them.
So I just, I raise this because it's, again, as I said, my experience, it's a, it's a pervious, impervious issue as well as a lot coverage issue. A lot of extra spa, in my opinion, a lot of extra space was forced upon me that I thought was wholly unnecessary.
But that was not by the town?
Not by the town.
Okay.
Just talking more broadly.
So I'm just curious, you have pervious parking spots as well at your house?
Impervious, sorry. All, it's all impervious.
Impervious, okay.
Sorry, I get those words backwards.
I'm just wondering why that's up, that's why I was asking.
All concrete. All right, that's the only question I had was those.
And we're going to add the pervious, speaking of pervious, we're going to add John's words for pervious?
So after that, we're, we're on, you know, we now have a motion pending if, if we want to approve this, but with the understanding that before second reading, we will add language to deal with the pervious surface. We can certainly, we can certainly do that. We can commit to adding that.
That was, as I understood, for a non-single-family, or is that the intent of...
Well, I think the pervious was everything, yeah.
Non-single-family.
Commercial.
Yeah, commercial. Not, not residential.
Right.
Okay, so I know this is late. I'll stop after this, and I promise. To Mr. Warren's point, and Mr. Mayor, you said this, how is the concept of shared parking incorporated in this? If I look at the conference center part of the hotel, does that count? Does the pool right there and that little restaurant and the conference center, is all that counted in their parking? Or how does that shared concept, does it show up anywhere?
Shared concept would be that wherever parking is, whatever the minimum requirements for those uses, would, would be able to be placed on several different parcels, not necessarily on the same parcel as that use. So you would be looking at collectively, particularly in that example, the old inside conference center, the Cougar Point, collectively, as long as the minimum, minimum number of spaces were met, they could be placed on any, any of those sites.
Thank you.
So as I look at this, just my thought, I know we talked about it extensively at the workshop also, and there's parking problems all over Kiowa that I think we need to address. You know, Mr. Warren said it, we've all, I think, said that. I'm concerned we're band-aiding something, and I think there's still some structural issues in how we approach parking. And I'm not sure we're ready with this document to do that. I, I think maybe we need something that has more broader participation, bring the resort in, bring others in if need be. I want to solve the parking problem. I agree with the mayor. You know, the, the West Beach parking problems the last few years that have manifested through development has been a problem. I see it firsthand. I'm not sure this does it. And I've just got concerns about supporting it right now, the way it's written, the way it stands. But I want to solve the problem.
How would you like to?
I don't know at 5:30, but I...
But we had, I mean, again, I just, I want to make sure that we onboard everybody's thoughts and that we figure out a best path to move forward. But we spent two hours on, you know, these kinds of issues at one council meeting, that we had a workshop, four hours to talk about these things. Everybody had ample opportunity to provide input, and, and now, you know, we got input, and so now we have something in front of us, and we're saying...
And I understand, and it's first reading, but, and I'm happy to answer your question with a clearer head. I just, with the discussions happened and reviewing this many times, I think we need to approach the problem differently. I'm not quite sure what that answer is.
Part of the, the issue I have, I also have concerns, Mr. Mayor, and I'm just trying to look at this pragmatically. For associated uses, which is a change, they want, where it's now written that 75% of the parking for other uses, 75% for the restaurants, the bar, the office, the pool, that's on top of the, I mean, these are people that are already staying at the hotel. I don't go to the sanctuary to park and go in the pool. I, I think it's an, it just comes across, it feels to me it's an overkill. It just does.
If I could, I, I think, I think you do. I think you go with me, or we go, or we see each other.
I've never gone to the pool.
You may not go to the pool, but you've gone to the ocean room, you've gone to jasmine porch, you've gone to the salon.
Yeah, but they're talking about 75%.
Bar.
He's been to the pool bar. I've been to the pool bar with you and just jasmine porch.
I've never been to the pool bar. I've been to...
You have. You drank so much that day, that's why you don't remember, because you have great drinks.
Lobby bar, not the pool bar.
Speaking about bars.
Those drinks at the pool bar are spectacular.
But remember, what we did is we reduced, we, what was in here, reduced the number of parking spaces by 25% associated with the guest room. And so it's distinguished between, you know, what parking is required for those who are staying there versus what, who's parking there for all these other ancillary uses. I used in our workshop, if you recall, and one of the participants had, I don't know what was on her mind that day, but I said something like a Motel 6 doesn't need a whole bunch of parking spaces because the only people that are parking there are the people that are staying there.
We, we, I remember having this same discussion, and I remember bringing this up at a workshop. And I remember somebody came back and said, well, you're, you're not accounting for all the people that are bussed in or take Ubers, et cetera, and so forth. I remember that back and forth at the workshop. Regardless of the back and forth that we had, it still requires one space per guest room. So all of the discussion we had about people coming on buses and Ubers didn't factor into here.
Yes, it did, because it went down from 1.25 to 1.
But it's still 1. So if you have people taking buses and Ubers and carpooling, it's not in the calculation.
Again, provide, if you want to say that should be 0.75, make, I mean, that's, that's an appropriate amendment. It could have been offered at any time since the workshop. I mean, we've got to figure out a way to move forward on this stuff. We can certainly, if you want to make that a motion now, that's fine, but we had a workshop, and we've, you know, and...
Okay, so now here it comes down to, so when did we get all this information? We received it on my front door like two days or so ago. I am not a transportation engineer. I do not know the right answer to that. I just don't. And so what do we do then?
Well, that was also, I, I don't know, I don't know the answer to that. We had a workshop, this was the issue, we said, give comments if you have suggested specific section, and nobody provides them.
Well, but part of the problem is you're looking for people, then it's not their area of expertise, a transportation engineer. So how do we give comments if that's not our specialty?
Well, if, and if we want to say we need to have a transportation engineer to hire a transportation or review our parking regs, we can do that. I, I don't know if that's the, you know, best way forward or not. I don't know. I just, I, I hear what you're saying, and, you know, Planning Commission spent a lot of time on these issues, made recommendations. We had a workshop, we, the staff and I spent more time on this stuff. We tried to come up with something that made sense, and if we haven't succeeded in that regard, that's fine. But we need to have a process for figuring out how to get from one place to another rather than saying, I still don't understand it every time we meet.
I'm happy to offer you recommendations later this week after I've thought about that. I understand what you're asking for, and you want recommendations on how to move forward, and I'm happy to help with that. We, in my opinion, we squeezed in a workshop, and then the next day I went on vacation. So we're doing a lot of rapid-fire. Madeline wasn't even able to join the whole workshop. So I, I think we need to just take a breath and do what you're asking. But I feel like we're doing this in a really rapid succession, and I'd like a chance to marinate on it for nothing, lack of a better word, and then try to do what you're asking.
I took the book to Italy with me when I was on vacation. You didn't take the book with you?
Yeah.
Would you read it though?
You should have seen our suitcases, I didn't have room.
I would offer, given the opportunity, that I could bring some of the people that work for me, that do these things as part of our development process, to sit down and just understand the logic that we use.
Whomever you want us to sit with.
Do we, do we want to add this to the other workshop that we're doing? So now it's a workshop with two items? Do we want two separate workshops? I mean, I, I'm open to anything.
I think that's what I'm hearing. Yeah, I think so, maybe.
Number one, I would appreciate that very much, your offer. Number two, I think that any votes that I'm likely to take after four hours of meeting, maybe will just be a no vote. So if you're happy with that, that's kind of my SOP, then, then we can be much more efficient in those first four hours.
And point going forward.
I have one more point. We have gotten an awful lot of compish. In that first four hours of our meeting today, we were aggressive, we were efficient, and I think we made some good decisions. I frankly am satisfied with that progress, and so if some other progress has, needs to be delayed in, in workshop form, and Lance is right, not only was that workshop called before I was ever checked for availability, but I couldn't hear the 50% that I was able to attend.
Apologize for that. We need to continue to work on connectivity issues.
So I would be, I would welcome a workshop that tackles both of these issues. I am also not yet comfortable in casting a coherent, logical, well-thought-out vote on this particular first reading.
Moving forward, Brad, just please consider this as instructive rather than critical?
I said I'm open to whatever we work.
No, 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 I'm just saying globally. We can't do all this stuff in one day.
It's just too much.
It's just too much.
I actually suggested multiple meetings and special calls, and people didn't want to do that either. So I, I mean, not everybody agree, has the same view. Some people want to get it all done in one meeting. If, if the consensus is to have multiple meetings, we have large agendas, that's fine with me. I don't have any problem with that.
Rather have multiple meetings.
As long as we work the discussions.
So, so what I'll commit to, I was on vacation too, and I spent a lot of time on, like, the first six of these, and I did not spend nearly as much time, in fact, I spent no time on the parking.
Yeah, me too.
I just took, I trusted the Planning Commission. Let me finish, let me finish, this is important. I trusted the Planning Commission and the Planning Director on doing this, and in this case, I'm, I'm happy to take the direction from the Planning Commission, the Planning Director, that are experts. But going forward, I will commit to you that I will do more work in advance of the meeting and become prepared for every issue. And I wasn't prepared for this one today, so I apologize. But I'll do more homework, and I'll do it further in advance and give you comments.
No question, there's a lot here, and I anticipate a lot in November, probably a lot in December. In part because the Planning Commission's been doing an extraordinary amount of work and sending a lot our way. Kiowa Next is one of the things on our agenda, so we can break it up into component parts or not. But this one, I, I hear that we're, the consensus is, they're not kind of ready to act on this, so I would entertain a motion to, to table consideration of the recommendation 12-28. At this point in time, we'll take up at a future council meeting, and the interim will schedule a public workshop.
So moved.
Second.
And, yes, and you just mentioned that the November and December council meetings are going to be equally as challenging. We have to have a different solution.
We could, we can have multiple council meetings, that's fine. We can break it up into component bars. If, that, but that becomes, everybody puts this stuff on the calendar, then it becomes a little bit more challenging to try to get five people, but we'll endeavor to do our best.
All right, but that's true, but, but, but listen, but, but here, at least here me, and I think it's, it's, we're fatigued, and I am not happy voting on things at the end of the day when I'm fatigued. I really am. I'm, I'm really not happy. So I just...
We don't want you to be hangry.
No, 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 well, I'm not, I, I don't think I am hang, well, no, I am hungry, but not hang, I'm not coming across as being angry, I'm just, is actually saying, it's, I'm not content with voting properly and doing the rigor and the analysis that it deserves when I'm so fatigued.
So we, again, we will schedule, if, if it looks like a full agenda, we'll break it up into multiple meetings.
And, and...
And I'm working on it in the winter, and I'll share with the mayor to see kind of what we have right now.
You know, for example, one thing you should think about going forward is that, like, in December, probably not December meeting, but January meeting, we're going to need to do a budget amendment. It is one, there's a bunch of other stuff, but a budget amendment, and there we're going to have to embed, embed a lot of stuff around the addition. So, you know, maybe that's a standalone special call meeting, something like that.
Probably, but, but now we have an executive session?
Yep.
Kill me now. I mean, come on.
Don't get me started on that. It was one person that wanted to have the executive session, so...
I'm in favor of the executive session too, so there's at least two, but...
Okay, all right.
You've heard three.
Okay.
If I could share one more thought, please, because I know we need to go. I think none of us are afraid to work. All of us campaigned on let's get some stuff done. I don't want the next council to look back and say they moved too fast, and now we've got to go clean it up. I'd rather be more thoughtful.
Again, there's no reason we need to act on, there's no particular reason we need to act on this ordinance now, so let's take our time and, and, and get it right. I just want to say, when we next bring it up, then, we, we, I don't, I mean, it's, we can't continue to kind of do this cycle, well, you know, I just didn't have a chance to really reveal this, I didn't get a chance to get my comments.
I was talking more to, hats off to the Planning Commission, they're turning out a lot of stuff. There's other feeds coming into the council also, and if we need to slow down how fast we address what is coming up to us, I'd rather be more measured in that and be sure we're getting it right than, well, the Plan Council, Planning Commission voted on it, so we've got to take it up at the next meeting. I, I don't think there's a requirement to do that, is there?
There, there, actually, is there, within 30, there's...
There's 30-day at least council that needs to, Planning Commission's recommendation with submitted to them.
Yeah, so I mean, we do...
Maybe there's a way to do that, but...
Yeah, we do have to, when a Planning Commission sends something, because we do have to react to it.
Yeah, okay, so we have to do something to it, but we'll figure that out.
So anyway, I hear all this, and we'll, we'll try to set a tempo that is, or cadence for this, that maybe more meetings, but hopefully less lengthy meetings. Actually, I think we have a pending motion...
We do.
...to table, and, and then have a workshop in the interim. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. Citizen comments on...
Yeah, one more item.
Oh, there is one more? Oh, where is one more item? I'm sorry, sorry.
That's the point.
That's all right.
Uh, so this last amendment being proposed is to three sections of our, our code regarding our boards and commissions. Uh, it, the intent is to clarify a few things, one being, uh, sort of the purview of the membership, not just being within Kiowa Island as the current ordinance shares, it references now the entire town's municipal boundaries, uh, for where that member, uh, would be able to, um, be pulled from. Uh, the only difference between the Planning Commission's Board of Zoning Appeals and Landscape Tree Preservation Board ordinance is that, um, there was clarification on the Board of Zoning Appeals, uh, five members being resident members. Um, that's just clarity adding on where we are now in sort of Kiowa's development. Previously, it may have not been full, um, resident members on the BZA, but, um, that has been already in practice, so it's just kind of codifying, uh, where we are to have at least five of those members be resident members. And then on the Tree Preservation Board, uh, language, um, adding in that because of the, the ability to pull from a broader standpoint, Town Council, which already has that purview, but just to allow, uh, the ability to pull outside of, um, uh, those who may be actual resident within the town's limits.
John, one little question, I mean, it's kind of came up in Ms. McElveen's comments, but, um, and we want to be kind of consistent how we apply these things unless there's a specific reason not to do so with regard to the construct of our various commissions, but why did we add, uh, language municipal boundaries as opposed just permanently within the town of Kiowa Island? Uh, that's, that's redundant, seems redundant.
Well, yeah, one of those can be eliminated, whether it's, uh, the municipal boundaries of, yeah, I don't think there's a rationale why both are specifically why those are in there, it's just really, the, the idea was to capture the, the town's boundaries, and so whether we say the town of Kiowa Island or municipal boundaries.
Yeah, I think that, I, I would say that's sufficient, and I just want to create, but it's, it's a minor little...
Yep.
Uh, any questions, John?
No, sir.
And same, the municipal boundaries shows up in six of eight.
Yeah, all three, I changed them all three, I know all three of those.
Entertain a motion for, uh, approval of the, oh, this is a public hearing, well, this is first reading, okay, sorry, okay. I would entertain a motion to go into public hearing, uh, with regard to ordinance, proposed ordinance 2025-24.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any members of the public would like to comment on this? Uh, I trust there are not, therefore I would entertain a motion to go in, back into regular session.
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye? Um, okay, I would entertain a motion for approval of ordinance 2025-2024 as proposed with the, uh, amendments to change the references to municipal boundaries as being unnecessary.
So moved.
Order discussion? All in favor?
Wait, 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 I just have one.
Okay.
I know it's late, um...
I tried.
I know, I started, I mean, the language is, the language intended for it to mean voting residents, or why the eight months requirement? You want to do real residents of the town where they vote and their license are here? What if they leave for eight months, but their residence is in Albany, New York? Do you care? What's the intent?
The, the idea is that, uh, the res- we, because we define resident member, that resident member, uh, is someone who is not less than eight months each year is, is here, so that, that's why, because we define resident member. If you want to, you particularly could eliminate resident member and just allow any resident who are in within the town of Kiowa to simplify it, but because we define resident member, previously there was a sort of a debate between someone who's, uh, on Kiowa majority of the time versus not being majority of time.
I mean, a legal resident is six months and a day.
Well, no, you can declare residency wherever you want to. You can, it may, uh, states may, for tax purposes, look at that differently, and you can only vote, constitutionally, you can only vote in one place that you declare.
That's remiss, what do you want, somebody who spends time here?
Yeah, the short, the short thing is, we want someone who is here regularly to be able to participate in this board, that's, that's the intent, to who's...
Uh, you have to be a voter, registered voter.
Legal resident?
Well, that, you just, you just have to be a registered, regi- you actually have to be, I think, registered to vote, is that right? Yeah. We, we could, but, but to the point that we need to probably clean up all these things, because I'm not sure quite what we should care about or not.
That sort of is, so I, I know, like, BZA recently addressed this in their local rules, and that's what we're trying to do, is make the rules that they've adopted for their members consistent with the towns, like, we're trying to make all of them consistent. So we recently did this at the local BZA rules of procedure, would, to make it consistent with these.
So one of the things, just, just the Seafills example, the, uh, the resident of Seafills, based on our rules of procedure, that BZA member wouldn't have been able to serve because of the, how it was written, so this would clarify...
Why wouldn't, why wouldn't they have been able to serve?
Because of Seafill, the way it was written, it was saying "on Kiowa Island," opposed to within, within the town.
On Kiowa Island? It's supposed to in Kiowa, in the town?
If you look at the language here, that's, that's how it's referenced, it's saying "on Kiowa Island," so the, the comments that Ms. McElveen...
There should never be any reference with regard to residency as "on Kiowa Island."
I'm saying that's what's, that's what we're trying to clean up.
Okay.
So Mac, is it, should be just like a legal resident of the town of Kiowa, or...
I think municipal boundaries is probably good. It could be within the municipal limits of the town of Kiowa Island, or...
But for eight months?
Resident of the town of Kiowa Island, it's not on Kiowa Island, it's a resident of the town of Kiowa Island.
The, the language that's being proposed now is a, a person who resides permanently within the town of Kiowa Island. So if everyone's comfortable with that, that's, that's based on striking the municipal boundaries portion, but it would be a person who resides permanently within the town.
I, I'm generally fine with that language, we just need to, it, it was raised, I think, more correctly, we just, we use slightly different phrasing and terminology in different places, and that doesn't serve anybody's purpose, so we just need to try to figure out how best to clean it up. But only internally consistent with the BZA stuff, not across all our other references? I'm, I'm just kind of meant generally, when we use this term at different places throughout ordinances, I think it's, it, it's different.
I wouldn't suggest it just be a legal resident of the town of Kiowa.
Yeah.
No ti- I mean, a legal resident, you're here for six months and a day, or eight months, or 12 months, or whatever. I think that's the intent, right? So that would be...
Yes, but I think previously there was a notion that even you're a legal resident, you may not be physically here majority of the time of the year, and that was the concern.
I mean, the idea of you're going to monitor whether you spent one particular year, you got a second home, you spent eight months here, or you spent seven months here, I just...
Can I just, so, so we don't go down this rabbit hole, so if they wanted to do that, because at the end of the day, the mayor makes recommendation to council, so if there's a member, like we had one before who wanted to serve, but she was going to be in Michigan majority of the time, the time we said, "When you move here, then we, then you will consider," but at the end of the day, council, you know, can decide.
In this language, are you measuring if they're here eight months, or seven months and 29 days?
If it says that, we're not measuring it, we're not measuring it, and I don't want to be, the town to be in the business of...
I would suggest make it just a legal resident of the town of Kiowa, and do that across all of the...
I, I, I would tend to agree with that, and then in the evaluation process for deciding who we actually want to appoint as opposed to who's eligible, we may make a determination that, "Yeah, I'm a legal resident, but I'm only here one month out of the year," that, uh, that, uh, okay, apply when you're spending more time here. Okay. So what, what, what are we, for purposes...
So I think, for purposes of where we are, I think, uh, you can approve on first reading with the expectation we'll come back with those suggested changes.
Okay, all right. Is that fine with everybody? If all, if further...
I'll watch the video and see if I agree.
Discussion, or, or if no further comments, then all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, citizen comments on any agenda item. You sure? Going once, going twice?
I will make one comment.
Yes, sir. Not putting up with anything, you, your comments are always welcome, and almost is frequently very valuable. I would entertain a motion to go into executive session pursuant to the allowances under state statute to receive, uh, legal advice regarding our settlement negotiations pertaining to Sam's spit.
If you don't get a motion, does that mean we get to go home?
Uh, yes, that's exactly right. There is a motion.
So moved.
There is a second. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Nay.
Nay.
In all seriousness, we're not mentally sharp enough to do this. In all seriousness.
I, I'm fine to do it, I have no issue doing it, I, I just don't. But, but if you guys don't want to do it today, then we'll set up a special call session.
When, when can we set it up?
We've already voted.
Yeah.
I did not vote.
Oh.
I said not vote.
Okay.
No, but in all, I mean...
It's, oh, then it's, right now, 2-2, you're the deciding vote.
If you, if you guys want, you know, if you, personally, I, I hear everybody...
Just vote no. I mean, I voted no, I don't want to go, I voted no, I mean, you just got to vote no.
I think it would be helpful to briefly go in, and then if we need, if y'all need time to think about it, you can...
There isn't going to be brief, not going to be brief.
Mac, it's never going to be brief, come on, you've been here long enough.
It's not going to be brief, not even close.
But if it's, if not now, when?
I, I'm, I'm fine, I mean...
What was the vote?
If you guys wanted to have this, I'm fine, we scheduled it, so I'm saying, I...
I'm voting no.
So, Mr. Mayor, you have the deciding vote, there's two ayes and two noes.
I'm, I'm willing to change my vote to no, I think, if we could pick on, pick a date. I mean, we need to have the meeting, I think we need to have it soon. I'm gone Thursday and Friday, so...
How much notice do you need for these meetings? 24, that's all?
It, it sounds like, uh, there were, uh, I, I'll vote aye, but there were three, it sounded like there were three nay votes? Is that correct?
I'm a nay.
I'm a nay.
I'm, I'm changing to nay.
Okay. Uh, the, the motion to go into executive session fails. Um, we have no further pending bet, business other than council member comments?
I have no comments.
Nay.
None.
I have no further comments, uh, without any pending, uh, further business, we adjourn.